I now call to order the October tenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of the Town of Wellington Board of Trustees. Time being six thirty P M. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Daly.
Present.
Trustee Gator.
Here.
Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Wigan.
Here.
Trustee Teets.
Here.
Mayor Pretend McDonald.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening?
No.
Any conflicts of interest with just the agenda this evening?
No. All right, now we will move on to public comment. Individuals wishing to speak will be provided three minutes. Approach the podium and state your name for the record. All right, no public comment. Next, we will have a proclamation for Community Planning and Building Appreciation Month. Mister Eric Starter, the Chair of the Planning Commission, Mister Wyatt Knutson, Chair of the Board of Adjustments, and members of the Town's Planning and Building Staff will receive this proclamation on behalf of the town. With the named individuals, please approach the podium.
You're good.
All right, whereas Plan- Community Planning in- Oh, oh, okay, okay. Everybody bring it on up. I'm like Ron Burgundy. I just read what's on here.
So proud of them.
All right. Whereas, community planning and building shapes the present and future development in the Town of Wellington. And whereas, community planning and building provides an opportunity for all residents to be, or yeah, to be meaning- meaningfully involved in making choices to determine the future of their community. And whereas, the full benefits of community planning and building require public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas, Community Planning and Building Month offers an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential to recovery and how planners can lead communities to equitable, resilient, and long-lasting recovery. And whereas, Community Planning and Building Month, recognized nationally, gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the experts who have contributed to the future of the Town of Wellington. Now, therefore, I, Kayla Shosse, the Mayor of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the month of October, twenty twenty-three, as Community Planning and Building Appreciation Month. And I encourage all residents to recognize the dedicated efforts of the planning and building professionals in appreciation of their many efforts. I further extend thanks to the planning and building staff, including Mister Cody Byrd, Mister Paul Lorn, or Wallen, sorry, Mrs. Patty Lundie, Miss Kathy Dykstra, and Diane Smith, and Miss Kristen Gallegos, as well as the members of our Volunteer Planning Commission and Board of Adjustments for their service to the Town of Wellington.
Yeah, we can see that. Squeeze in everybody.
There you go.
Definitely got that one.
There you go.
All right, one, two, three. Great, thank you.
All right, I now close the regular meeting and open the Liquor License Authority Board, time being six thirty-five P N. Mr. Clerk, may I please get a roll call?
Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Wigan.
Here.
Trustee Gator.
Here.
Trustee Teets.
Here.
Trustee Daly.
Present.
Mayor Pretend McDonald.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you. We will first have the Come and Go presented by Mister Moose.
All right, good evening, Mayor Shosse, Trustees, Ethan Moose, Town Clerk. It's my pleasure to present these items to you this evening. Uh, the first item before the Liquor License Authority Board tonight is a, uh, license renewal for Come and Goes, um, excuse me, fermented malt beverage wine city license, uh, liquor license renewal. Uh, they submitted their annual renewal for this license, uh, and after review, found the establishments in good standing with the Colorado Secretary of State. The establishment is current with sales tax. And the Laramie County Sheriff's Office reported no ish- uh, issues directly related to the establishment's liquor license. Establishment has legal possession of the premise, and there were no issues or concerns during a visual inspection. And happy to take any questions for you regarding this application.
Trustee Gator. Trustee Daly, Trustee Mason. Or Pretend. No, no questions. Are there any questions from the public on this agenda item? No. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Come and Go number nine thirty-four fermented malt beverage and wine, uh, liquor license renewal application.
Second.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Mayor Pretend McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries and the renewal is approved. The next item before the board this evening is a renewal from Cantina Liquors Liquor Store Renewal. Uh, they submitted their annual renewal, and after review, found that the establishment's in good standing with the Colorado Secretary of State. The establishment is current with sales tax, and Laramie County Sheriff's Office reported no issues directly related to the establishment's liquor license. Establishment has legal premise, or excuse me, legal possession of the premise, and there were no issues or concerns during a visual inspection. Happy to take any questions on this, uh, application.
Any questions from the board? No questions. Are there any questions from the public on this item?
No.
Do I hear a motion? Not all at once.
I'll make a motion to approve the Cantina Liquors Liquor Store License and Delivery Permit Renewal Application.
Second.
Bejou vu. May I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Mayor Pretend McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously, and the license renewal is approved.
Thank you, Mister Moose. All right. I will now close the Liquor License Authority Board meeting, time being six thirty-nine P M. All right. Um, I will now, I guess, do I need to reopen the regular meeting?
Should stay to, yeah, reopen.
Going to reopen the, uh, regular meeting of Wellington Board of Trustees for October tenth, twenty twenty-three, time being six thirty-nine P M. May I get a roll call, please?
Certainly, Mayor Shosse.
Oh. Trustee Gator.
Here.
Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Daly.
Present.
Trustee Teets.
Here.
Trustee Wigan.
Here.
Mayor Pretend McDonald.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here.
Thank you. We still have a quorum.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to the presentation. Um, first one's going to be the Laramie County Humane Society on the contact pro- or contract proposal.
So, thank you, Mayor and Trustees, for this opportunity. Um, staff had brought forward the idea and the concept of this updated contract with the Humane Society, and there were quite a few questions that we weren't ready or didn't have the information to support or to, to respond to. So, in response to that, we have asked for members of, um, Judy Calhoun and Rigo Negra, um, to attend the meeting tonight to provide a short presentation, and then to answer any questions you may have related to that proposed contract. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, just real quickly, thank you, uh, Ms. Garcia, for the introduction for, uh, partners at Laramie Humane Society. Um, we do have an existing contract with the Humane Society that was described in one of our previous work sessions. Um, it's kind of a, an à la carte, if you are an as-needed service contract, and the twenty twenty-four proposal that was in your packet um, describes, uh, what we're, we would call it a full-service contract with Laramie Humane Society. And Rigo has been our primary contact for kind of our operational needs, um, and has been a great resource for us, adds great value to the community. We've tapped into that resource quite a bit here recently with a couple of animal control complaints, um, that we've been dealing with. And Judy Calhoun has been here in the past, um, to represent, uh, Laramie Humane Society. So, with a quick introduction of those two individuals, what I asked them to do was to, um, kind of just walk through the, the value add that the full-service contract would give to Wellington, uh, as compared to our à la carte type of contract that we have in place today, um, as well as some additional information that might be available for, um, what other communities are doing in similar situations as Wellington here in the Front Range.
Thank you, Cody. Um, and I do just want to let you know that as of October second, we are now functioning as no co-humane. Um, since we began operating the shelter over in Evans, Colorado, and providing services in Weld County. So, um, a couple of years ago, um, several of the smaller communities here in Laramie County came to us, um, requesting a proposal for potentially a joint services contract that would be full service. Um, so instead of a per animal per call basis, um, it would be a flat fee. Um, and then, um, whatever calls, whatever animals came in. Um, Timnith and Berthad chose to move forward with that. It's been almost, it's, yeah, almost two years. Um, and, um, as we've looked at those renewals, we've, we've gone back to the other communities, including Wellington, to simply say, if you are interested in participating in this joint, um, contract, there may be some ways to save some money or protect you from, um, potential high costs. So, um, and then just as a, a reminder, on the per animal per call contracts, the sort of à la carte that Cody referred to, were really designed for us essentially to be a backup, esp- especially with the calls, um, the animal protection and control calls, not to be your, um, everyday animal control service, but really to provide backup for whomever was normally doing your calls, whether that was a particular staff member or a member of the Sheriff's Department. Um, so, um, what you get with the, uh, with the full service is you do get a, essentially a guaranteed price. Um, our estimates are based on, um, five day a week in service responding to calls, but you get seven day a week dispatch. Um, so, those calls get responded to by the dispatch officer, which oftentimes can resolve those situations, and I'll let Rigo talk more about that. You also get emergency calls, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. Um, you get a flat, for the year, a flat sheltering rate, regardless of the number of animals that come in. So, if you were to have a, um, a hoarding case or a large-scale, um, cruelty case in town, um, you wouldn't, you are protected against that. Um, you do share the, um, animal control officer with Timnith and Berthad, so responding to those calls. And again, I'll let Rigo answer questions more about, um, how that would work. Um, we basically take our actual costs, um, for the officer for sheltering costs and, um, spread them out across, um, the three jurisdictions, if you choose to, to go in with, um, Timnith and Berthad, um, based on usage. We are estimating your usage for next year, based on the, your previous experience. So, it could change in the future, um, which is one of the things we've sort of, we had warned Timnith and Berthad about that. Um, and they have seen some fluctuation, um, especially as, for them, as we're more able to respond to calls. They have seen some increases in their, in their calls. Um, there is, um, we do add a small administrative fee on to cover some of, um, H R finance, um, those administrative costs. So, um, Rigo, anything you want to add to that, and then we can answer questions?
Good evening. So, something to understand with this, with, with our officers and with our program, is that we have a entire animal control unit. Uh, several, actually, quite a number of animal control officers who are trained extensively for this. We have equipment, uh, specialized equipment, and people who are on duty twenty-four hours a day. So, some of the added benefit that you get with a contract with us is that recruitment, training, wondering who's going to be on duty if somebody's sick or on leave, or if you have some separation with local staff, that's no longer, uh, an issue, which is something that we've seen. The contract that we previously had is a support contract. When there was a change in staffing levels, or somebody was on vacation or ill, then that's when we would usually step in. With this, there's never a concern with that, because we're, we're assuming that all of the responsibility and making sure that that position is staffed, and we're doing the recruiting and hiring and outfitting for that person. Um, the five days a week, something to keep in mind there, too, is that that's for full service, meaning that we're responding to whatever calls are coming in during that time. On the off days, the other two days of the week, that dispatch is, is receiving those calls, and as Judy had said, is responding to them at least over the phone, but if there's emergency calls, then an officer is dispatched to respond. So, it's not completely off on those other, on those odd days. The other thing is, is currently with Wellington's contract, the call has to come from either the Sheriff's Office or the town. Something I've, I've been, uh, working in animal control. I started here in Laramie County in ninety-seven. So, I remember all the way back, and it hasn't changed much. People from Wellington call our shelter and ask for service, and we refer them back to the town. So, there's a little bit of a delay, and as far as a service to the members of the community, they have to call, talk to somebody, see if it's been approved. They still can't call us, has to get referred. So, there's a lot of jumping around in that response. In this contract, somebody can, the residents of the town can now just call us directly, and we can respond appropriately to that, to that call for service. So, that's just a few other items there to keep in, keep in mind when looking at the option.
Yeah, um, the one other thing, um, Rigo mentioned, equipment, train staff and equipment, also vehicles. Um, and I don't know if the town has tried to purchase a vehicle recently. Good luck. Um, so, um, you also, yeah, sorry. But you get those specialized vehicles. You're not having to do that yourself. So, that's covered.
Start with questions. Trustee Gator?
So, the main question I have is, so during the off hours, so if someone's calling on the days off and dispatched calls, I know you mentioned dispatch will handle most of that over the phone, but if there is an emergency call, do we get billed additionally based on either that? Either people calling in, or if they do have to come out to an emergency call?
No, that's all combined into this cost. So, currently, the model right now is during certain hours of the day, there's one cost, and cer- and during after-hours or emergency hours, there's a, there's a adjusted cost for that. This is coverage either way. There's not any change. It, what, the change is that those emergency calls are designated so that we understand what will be responded to on those, on those, uh, off days.
Okay.
That's all it is.
Got it. So, basically, looking at-
There's no additional cost. This is what, this is what you pay.
Nineteen six ninety-four is what we, now granted, if we have an insane number of calls next year, it would probably get reallocated and be different, but if we have an insane number of calls, people are calling on Saturdays and Friday nights and all that stuff, we're not going to get a bill for like thirty grand for this year. Okay.
And I, I did not mention, but we are looking at adjusting the costs on our per animal per call contracts. So, your costs, um, we've not shared those yet. We're still, we're working those out, and we have them within a couple of weeks. But your costs, um, for the backup service would go up for next year.
Okay.
So.
Got it. Uh, I think that was the question I had. Thank you.
Trustee Daly?
Um, obviously, if you guys are accepting more calls directly, the calls, the call count's going to go way up, right? So, that makes sense. Um, and I have the same questions about year after year negotiating again, the, the split and those kind of things. Do you guys offer any multiple year or anything with these estimates kind of contracts? Or would always be just one year based on estimates?
We have not. Um, it's certainly something we would entertain. Um, and with this contract, what I'd want to do is have those conversations, both with, if that's something you're interested in, both with the town as well as Timnith and Berthad.
Okay.
Since it is a, it is, you're, you're essentially sharing the cost of an officer is what you're doing. And so, that's what makes it affordable. If we were to assign an off, a, a single officer to the Town of Wellington, it's not going to be affordable for you, and that's what makes it affordable. So, if you are, um, we are certainly open to looking in that. I would encourage you to give us at least a year's worth of experience so that we can see what's happening. The other thing on, yes, if community members are able to just call us directly, we're going to see those calls go up, but I have a feeling it's going, you're going to get, your community members are going to get better service, um, and faster, and your town staff are going to have less of that sort of roundabout calls that are happening now. So, yeah.
Right. I think Berthad and Timnith would need to give us a little thumb, like they owe us one or something. Thank you.
Thanks. Trustee Mason?
Um, nothing real crazy for you guys. I was just curious. I, I obviously, as far as this goes, this would be on an annual basis and not something that we'd be required to renew like that, or, or any type of, you know, two, three-year agreement type deal.
Not unless as, um, uh, Trustee Daly asks that we negotiate a multi-year contract. No, it's a, it's a one-year, um, and then we renew at the end of that year.
Awesome. Appreciate the present- presentation, so.
Repertone. Trustee Wigan?
Quick ones, uh, so this is twenty-four seven, pretty much, right? Uh, normal response time, and we would call, our citizens would call you directly?
Yes, that's, yes, that's correct. So, the response time, it's, so that, that can be a little bit more challenging to kind of, to, to to calculate. Reason being, you're kind of the northernmost municipality. And so, our officers are moving around in a variety of different jurisdictions. The, the office, there's in design, we have an officer who's assigned to these three jurisdictions. Now, realistically, Berthad, Timnith, and Wellington are all geographically pretty far se- pretty well separated. So, the officers ma- the officer's assigned to that, and we try to keep a regular officer in there, or at least a small cadre of them, so that they get some familiarity with the areas that they're working. But they're moving back and forth, so they're addressing things in that manner. For things that are a higher priority or that are more urgent, uh, whether that, they need a quicker response, what we do is we, we shift people from one jurisdiction to another and then backfill with the next closest. So, if that makes sense. So, if I've got somebody who's kind of up here in the North County, they may not be the Berthad office or the Wellington officer, but they'll, we'll drive them down to, or guide them down to here, and then backfill somebody up to this part of the county if there, if there's stuff going on. So, it's constantly in motion. We have our own dispatch center that manages all of that.
Few weeks ago, we had a mountain lion wandering around here. How do you guys approach that?
We don't.
You don't?
We don't. No.
Fishing.
That's, that's Parks and Wildlife. As soon as dresses those, yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
But we have had officers deal with bulls in the road and that type of thing. So, yeah.
Trustee Teets?
I do have a few questions. Um, thank you, Trustee Gator, for asking my question about the cost for the after-hours. So, my curiosity comes is, in your explanations for after-hour emergency services, from five oh one P M. until seven fifty-nine the next morning, you guys won't capture an animal. You will only retrieve an in-custody animal. So, if someone were to call and say, there's a dog running, I can't catch it, what would your response be to that person at five thirty at night?
So, at five thirty at night, if the animal is not an injured animal, an aggressive animal, or a sick animal, it would have to be in custody. So, that is actually standard across the board in the entire county. So, the city of Fort Collins has a contract that goes until eight P M. at night during the weekdays. Berthad and Timnith have the eight hours a day. Uh, Loveland is to eight hours a day, so four P M. And so, it's, just to give you an example, in Loveland, if somebody calls at five P M. in, in Loveland and says, there's a dog running down the street, we take the information from them, and we explain to them that that's after-hours, and we're not able to respond to that call. There's no services at that time. So, that's what would happen. To answer your questions shortly, but that is a standard across the board.
Got it. So, and kind of when I was looking through all of our lovely Let's Talk Wellington posts, most of the dogs at large that I see are typically when families are coming home in the evening and they see a dog running, or say, six A M., seven A M., when they're driving their kids to school, is when I also saw the comments, dog running down the street. So, what I'm worried about is after five oh one, someone calls, that quality of service would decrease, what our residents feel decreased, because they're like, well, I called Humane Society, and they told me that unless I catch it, they can't help me. So, that, that's one of my concerns regarding this. Um, the other question was, is you said that Timnith and Berthad saw an increase. Do you know what that average increase was?
So, I, I could look it up and get that information to you. What we saw with that, so a, a number of things happened with Berthad and Timnith. So, there was an increase in the number of calls coming to us, because the residents, again, ju- just like Wellington, they had to go through their town in order to get us to respond. So, we saw an increase in calls because they didn't, number one, we saw an increase because the town wasn't addressing those calls themselves, so they were referring them to us. One of the other things that we saw was an increase in our ability to patrol. So, we saw a, 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 an incredible increase in our presence in the community, which according to the towns in my interviews with them, with the services, they, it's been very positive. They've seen a reduction in some of the complaints they're receiving, with some people speaking to the qual- kind of quality of life within their neighborhoods, because animal control is out in the neighborhood during the day. Some people commenting about feeling safer in the neighborhood, in the parks, because they can go to the park and people know that animal control is going to come there if somebody calls. So, uh, I can get the information, see what that increase exactly was over the time. Now, our data is also, one of the things to keep in mind is the data that we were presented, we had to work off data that we had for the calls that we responded and the data that those towns gave us. So, there was some discrepancies in kind of how it was tracked. So, we're two years in on that data, so there's, there's a little, there's a li- it's, the numbers are a little suspect how accurate it was from the original to what we have now. So, but I can look at that and get that to you if you'd like.
Got it. Well, so, and like you had said, because that was my next question for Cody, is what the average weekly calls are for animals at large? Because then we can kind of look at, well, this is how many Town of Wellington is receiving. Well, if they're going to be automatically bypassed, we can expect an average of this many calls going to Laramie County Humane Society instead. Do we have an average estimate?
Um, you know, it's a good question, Trustee Teets. I don't have that data in front of me right now. Um, we can certainly do some work in putting some information together. I would caveat it, though, that we've, we've recently employed a new, uh, employee in the Code Enforcement Neighborhood Services Officer position, and prior to that, there was about a nine-month gap, um, in that position. And so, there's a large volume of data that wasn't being collected during that gap to kind of fill that space, so our numbers might be a little out of date. Um, but I also want to maybe point out or maybe ask for, for Rigo's, um, input on it as well. But dogs at large, a lot of those don't go reported. We don't get calls for every time a dog is loose. A lot of times, neighbors go and retrieve their own animals. And in terms of the town being able to respond to those, whether it's during work hours or non-work hours, we can say, thanks for reporting that. If we can observe that there is in fact a violation of a dog at large, we can write a notice of a dog at large. We do not have staff to go and catch that animal. So, in terms of customer service, town staff isn't able to, currently anyhow, we don't, we don't have the equipment, training, or vehicles to impound and store those animals. So, if that were something that we're desired of town staff to, to provide that- So if that were something that were desired of town staff to, to provide that level of service for catching animals, we would have to do some different types of considerations for cost and budget proposals for what that might look like. Um, so there, there's definitely some nuance to animal control. Um, and the customer service is really what town staff is looking at primarily here in terms of overall coverage times, availability of trained personnel. And town staff is still going to be here to assist in those instances where if it's, if it's a matter of writing the violations for a dog at large or a barking dog or something else, we're absolutely able to still take those calls in addition to the humane society. But the reality is we have one neighborhood services officer who's also responsible for a whole host of other obligations that they have to do. And our customer service to the animal side of things is one that we're not really, we don't feel like we're able to meet the community's needs in terms of meeting that animal control service. So that's, that was the main reason why we made this request in addition to the cost comparisons for trying to bring that in-house and do that ourselves, uh, outside of the humane society.
So would a barking dog complaint go to the town of Wellington or would it go to Laramie County Humane Society?
Those would still start with humane society, um, and our staff would be available to assist in those matters. Um, we do get a lot of barking dog complaints. Um, and the reality is they don't resolve quickly. They don't resolve easily because I haven't been able to tell my dog to stop barking and on command say done, um, especially if there's other things involved like neighbors out in the yard and other things. Um, so it is a very tricky subject matter. Um, I'm sure Rigo could speak to that as well, but we would still refer those to Laramie Humane Society first. If it were a weekend or something else, if town staff still gets that call on a voicemail during after hours or things like that, we would still be able to take that on.
Got it. So then we would report it to Laramie County Humane Society and sorry, NOCO.
Humane.
Humane. Um, I had to work on that one. Um, and then you guys would take that file and report it over to the town of Wellington. Cause I still would like to make sure that people that are having these complaints logged with you would still be able to log it and it would still go against a code ordinance. Cause it is a violation of accord, code ordinance that we have here in town for barking dogs. Right, right. So I just want to make sure that that's something that's still going to be well accounted for and reported back.
Sure. So that's something to keep in mind right now. Our current contract, we don't really conduct enforcement in the town. So that's something to keep in mind. While we can on occasion, that's not our primary function up here. It's again responding to those emergencies and to fill in. So we don't have the, we don't have a really concrete structure on us doing enforcement. So once, if a contract was put together, what we've done with Berthad and Timneth is we've, we've shored up those, those processes and reporting. So any kind of do, barking dog complaint, noise complaint, feces complaint, you know, whatever other municipal violations might occur, we would be the ones that would be contacted and would address those. So that would be getting handled, something to keep in mind as well as we also address, uh, animal quarantine for animal bites. Uh, when there's animal attacks, welfare complaints, which are all a variety of other things that take specific knowledge to handle. And we can address those as well. So that would all be, those would all be subjects that would be off of the neighborhood resources officers uh, play and would free her up for, for additional, the other work that she has to do.
I also want to just clarify that those five days a week would include Saturdays and Sundays, which is what we've done with Timneth and Berthad because we want to be out and visible when a lot of families are home and out and about doing things.
So it wouldn't be just a Monday to, Monday through Friday?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I meant, I actually didn't mean to mention that. So the contract currently with Berthad and Timneth, and that's part of the contract, the group contract is the jurisdictions have to agree on the days of service. Because those officers are working on the same, that officer is assigned to the same day. Currently Berthad and Timneth have an officer Thursday through Monday. So the days off are Tuesday and Wednesday, which we've seen is typically the least. It's, it's, those are the lower days as far as calls or incidents. Doesn't mean it can't happen, but that's if you have the injured animal or the aggressive animal or something that's more of emergency in nature. But Saturdays and Sundays are on the regular agenda.
Perfect. That was actually one of mine.
And barking is actually one of the things that a dispatch officer can start. Depending on exactly how your, um, town ordinances are, they can start with, um, recommendations on how the complainant can, can, um, try to resolve that and kind of get it going at that point in time rather than waiting for an officer to come up either later in the day or another day. So that's one of the advantage, that's one of those things that kind of dispatch helps with.
Got it.
Yeah.
It does. Um, I apologize. I just, I had a lot of questions because it was just bullet points. It wasn't an actual contract. Um, so animals excluded from these costs includes animals transferred in, protective custody animals and animals born at Laramie Humane Society. Who receives the bill for those?
So, so what that means is when we do our calculation on animals that we have in our custody and so we track all of the animals that come into our custody by the municipality or jurisdiction that they come from. What that means is we, we exclude the animals that fall under those criteria from your cost. Those are covered in variety from our.
Yeah, essentially those are, those are covered by, essentially by donors. And the one that really I do want to point out is the protective custody. So that is for emergency situations. So a house fire, car accident, um, uh, medical emergency where there's no other adult in the home um, and no one to care for the animal. Normally that would indeed, uh, our natural disasters, those kinds of things. Normally that would be, um, at a cost to the jurisdictions. Um, we find that our donors, um, really like to support that. So it's been one of those things that we've been able to say, you know what? Even though this is kind of a municipal responsibility in the way, we'll pull it out and our donors will support it. Um, it is standard five days, um, hold period for protective custody. Um, with a natural disaster, it's for the time of the disaster. So, um.
State of emergency is called and when the state of emergency is.
Well, yeah, or, um, so if you think about the fires that we encountered Cameron Peak, et cetera, um, in twenty twenty, it was really for most of those families, it was till they could get back into their homes.
Got it.
Um, now, obviously when the fire was out and all of that, even if they, if they'd had damage to their homes, that's a different story, but we worked with people on those.
Got it.
Yeah.
Um. So each stray surrendered confiscated animal is charged a handling fee. Is this fee included in the contract cost?
Um, yeah, so you, nothing, you don't pay anything above these costs. So in you, if you're looking at your current contracts, those handling fees, those per day charges, the after hours charges for calls, this, it's all inclusive. Does that make sense? So what you see, um.
Sorry, it just says animal care costs. So I just wanted to verify.
Yeah.
Maybe it's the word is.
It's, um, impounding, it's the per day cost. It includes if, um, if there's a bite case with an unknown owner, um, it would include the first five days of that bite hold. Um, and then we would, if not reclaimed by an owner, because that's a stray hold period, we would make a decision. And if we chose to continue to hold that animal those last five days, the final five days of the bite hold period become our responsibility. Obviously if it's an owned animal with a bite hold, um, it's the responsibility of the, the owner.
Got it.
So.
Okay. So, yep, then there's, those were pretty much, the only thing it says, reporting. Is there a way to do quarterly costs above the regular contracted items? So if there is a way to, you say there's no additional costs, which is awesome. And I'm sure we'll see that in the contract when it comes to us, that none of this extra stuff is actually a cost. But if it ends up that there is an additional cost, will that be reported quarterly?
So, so currently I send a quarterly bill to the town.
Got it.
This, you'll get a quarterly report that is just the activity. There will be no billing. The contract will have a paint, uh, a, a, uh, structure of uh, pay, payments and timing for those payments that is what is in the proposal for that total amount and nothing above that.
And nothing above.
Correct.
Perfect. Awesome. Thank you. Sorry. Thank you for answering all my questions.
Yeah.
You go for it. Scenario, uh, when I lived in Fort Collins, I had a sick raccoon come into my garage. Call you guys?
Yes.
Okay.
If, if you had a sick raccoon in your garage in Wellington under this contract, you could call us and an officer.
And you'd take.
A healthy raccoon? No.
No.
Well, I didn't, I mean, he was in there.
Yeah.
Describe the difference between animal control and an infestation.
And, oh, an infestation?
Or, or, yeah.
So this is actually something that, uh, Cody and I discussed re, fairly recently. So we'll, we will get calls where somebody will explain to us that they have, uh, the example I'll give is, uh, skunks living under their shed. And they'll call us and ask us to come and remove those. That is, that is, uh, a nuisance wildlife issue. So that means that there's some sort of situation there where the animals have an environment that is conducive to them living there. That is not something that we will address. But if somebody has a sick skunk or a skunk that has been injured or has come in contact with their dog or their cat or they find it in their basement, that's the animal that will come out for. But just having wildlife living on your property or in your property in some instances, um, uh, we don't. There's a property in Fort Collins that is called it regularly and people call us because the neighbors don't like it. It's a vacant property and the raccoons have taken up living in the roof and tearing the roof off and poking their heads out. There's pictures and everything. But unfortunately, that's, they've left a house, an empty house for wildlife to live in. So it's a different issue. Yes, property maintenance. And we do collaborate often. So something else to understand is with this, and it's, these are the small things that most people don't think about with animal control. They think about an officer coming out and catching a dog running in the street. So as I mentioned earlier, we're dealing with bites, we're dealing with the variety of things, welfare concerns, barking complaints. But we also work in conjunction with the neighborhood resources or community service officers. So if there's nuisance properties or properties that have ongoing problems, often being able to address them from multiple angles and with other, with, with multiple people who have different specializations can help with how you address those properties. So that's something else to keep in mind. It's not a, you know, we do our thing and, and neighborhood resources does theirs. So we work very well and in conjunction with the other agencies within the town.
Perfect. Um. The only question that I have left that I think maybe was already answered. Since we share across, like if we were agreed to this, we'd share across the board with Berthad and Timneth in the cost. If their call volume goes up and the cost to provide service to their town, we inadvertently pay for that as well in a re-agreement or not?
No, the way, um, the nice thing about the shared contract is we take those shared costs and they get distributed based on use from the previous year.
Okay.
Um, so you, you don't, you don't pick up their costs. Now, should at some point in the future, the three of you decide that what you'd like to do is have seven day a week service, that would be an additional cost. It would need to be decided across all three communities. Yeah, yeah.
Perfect. That's all I had. I mean, great presentation. So thank you for all of that good information.
I have one item. Did, did you want to talk about the animal licensing piece or no?
Yeah. So we've, um, we do collect some licensing fees from, um, the town of Wellington. Obviously there are some costs associated with licensing and there's some revenue that, um, contractor, um, compensates for those costs. We think, um, that what we could do is look at a, a, a net of about probably five thousand for next year. So costs would be about, um, total revenue probably somewheres around, um, ten with about five in expenses and so a five net. Um, and if that's something, um, we can, we can look a little more closely at, at that, but yeah.
We don't have a contract with you to administer your licensing program, but people still license their animals with us. So, so that's something that's just been going on for, for quite a while. We have people in Weld County and Windsor and various towns that we don't have contracts for licensing, but they license with us because we're local and we have a large database and we administer that well. So that's, they want to have their animals identified. We also are with our contract with the county are the, uh, are the, the location that registers and tracks all of the rabies vaccinations for the county. So by default, we already have records of every animal that gets vaccinated or every dog and cat that's vaccinated in the county. So, but Wellington, a lot of people here licensed and doesn't, you guys don't administer your own town license? So with, we could have a contract that returns some of that money back to offset the cost of this as well. Which is what we, is a model that we use with the larger municipalities with Fort Collins and Loveland and with the county. Part of our contracts with them is that they're like, the, we administer a licensing program for them and then that helps to offset their animal control costs.
That's awesome. Yeah. Sper.
Um, I, I just wanted to throw one more element out there and, and a, a thank you as well, um, to, um, our folks at LC SO. Um, they have really stepped up when we had a gap in this position to help out and they've been extremely helpful. They do take a lot of calls after hours when we don't have town staff or, or neighborhood services officers not available. They'll take those after hours calls and, and start that reporting process or respond to vicious animals, dogs at large as there have resources available. Um, so one of the things that we view as a benefit of this contract also is it would help take some of the pressure off of LC SO to respond to animal con, control matters when they might have more important urgent matters to respond to. And the emergency services hours would be available through, uh, NOCO Humane Society. So we see that as an added benefit to, to help with the allocation of all of our available safety resources.
Awesome.
Yeah, and, um, just, I do want to clarify also that we have dispatchers on duty until eight o'clock. So, um, dispatch doesn't end at five.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you. All right. Up next is going to be a budget presentation on the twenty twenty-four budget. Mr. Don Rhodes.
Uh, good evening, mayor and board. I am just, I'm trying to get back to my Zoom that was there when I left my seat. And, uh, now it's not, so I'm going to try to get back into that so that we can share those slides. My name is Don Rhodes and I am the interim finance director and town treasurer for the town of Wellington. And I am, uh, here to finally present, if I can get to the slides. Okay, looks like it's coming up here. The proposed budget for twenty twenty-four. Uh, this is the, uh, third meeting we've had so far on the budget and it's the first one where we finally get to look at the whole picture. Um, and put everything together. Yeah, why don't you pull it up there? I, I had Zoom when I left my seat and it decided to, to stop. Okay, that's fine. Okay, great. Okay, next slide please. So, uh, I got a little bit of an agenda for you here. We're going to take a quick look at the budget calendar and then we'll do a budget overview, we're calling part three, because for those who haven't sat through all the meetings, uh, this, uh, board and others have been through already, two, uh, a, a very detailed meetings looking at the budget, the operating budget and the capital improvement program budget in previous meetings. So I'll call this part three because this is where we bring all of the numbers, uh, together. And there are parts beyond that, uh, as well when we look at the calendar. Then we'll look at the general fund revenues and expenditures and a little bit, uh, of detail. Uh, not as much detail as the last two meetings, but, uh, in something of an overview. And then all of the other funds we'll look at individually as well. Next slide please. So budget calendar, as you know, but all for the benefit of those here and who might be watching online. Uh, we had part one where we talked to some of the departments about their operating budgets on September nineteenth. And then last week, we talked to the remaining departments and looked at the C I P, uh, the capital improvement program budget uh, last week. So tonight we get to look at a budget overview, uh, but that's not where it ends. Next week we have something that as a long time budget person, sounds very exciting, a budget boonanza, where we get the community involved and, uh, get their input. where we get the community involved and, uh, get their input uh, directly. And then two weeks from tonight, uh, another budget work session where hopefully we can bring together whatever input we get tonight and whatever input we get from the boonanza and, uh, come up with a, um, a, a good draft budget. Uh, the budget adoption is, is now, is currently scheduled for December twelve. So this is still a fairly early point in the process. Um, it's called, it, it is a draft budget at this point, and so there is time to talk about things and to, uh, make changes as need be. So next slide, please. And part three, next slide. So let me, let me start out with, uh, some highlights, a budget overview, um, because this is my, my first presentation to this, uh, board and in this community. I want to make sure we're all talking about the same, um, terminology and the same kinds of things. Uh, because terminology can, can be different from one, um, from one entity to another. So, uh, let me just talk through a little bit of that. I've got some highlights for you, the twenty twenty-four proposed budget. And we'll look at this in number tables as well, painfully so in big number tables. Um, but I've learned that some people are communicate better with numbers and some people better, um, with, you know, with dialogue and narrative. So I'm kind of showing it both ways a little bit. So the proposed budget is sixty-seven point three million dollars. The operating portion of that is twenty-three million. The capital improvement portion is forty-four million, much bigger. So we'll talk about that. Um, all the funds, I'm happy to say that, uh, we're going to be looking at tonight meet, uh, the board adopted fund balance reserve requirement, uh, requirements. This board adopted some fund balance reserve um, guidelines last December, I believe it was. And so each of the funds meet those requirements. So that's, that's a good news thing. That's a good, happy thing to say. I'm happy to report that. Uh, however, there are some challenges in a couple of our enterprise funds, uh, water and sewer that we will talk about when we get to those funds because we're, we're not meeting debt service coverage requirements currently. And I'll, I'll get into those details when we get to those funds. Also, just so we're all on the same page, this budget includes, um, all of the recommended positions. There's a handful of positions that you learned about in the last couple of meetings. Um, those are included in here along with merit and cola increases and the other budget changes that were proposed early. So this is a, this is a kind of an all-in budget, just so you know what, what we're looking at number-wise. Next slide, please. Okay, so another good news thing to say here, we're going to start out with the, the general fund for twenty twenty-four. It's balanced, um, and by that I just mean, uh, that the projected revenues and transfers are greater than the, the, uh, projected expenditures by almost four hundred thousand dollars. So that's a positive thing, uh, as well as we're looking, uh, looking for, um, you know, positives here this evening. That, that is another, another good one in the general fund. We have a projected fund balance of nine point one million dollars and the reserve requirement is two point seven million. So there's quite a bit of room there. So that, that would, that should give the board some, some comfort, uh, in the ability to absorb a shock should that come along, uh, downturn in the economy or that sort of thing. Um, and that you not only meet your reserve requirement, but and then some. Uh, and some other just big topics and we'll look at the details, but, um, just so everyone has a big picture, property and sales tax are the primary funding sources for the general fund. It makes up almost three quarters of the general fund revenues. We'll look at that. And then the biggest single program in the general fund is, um, public safety. It's our Nremmer County Sheriff's Office contract. Next slide, please. A, a couple of footnotes, uh, again, just so we're all on the same page. Um, the revenue estimates that we're going to look at, this is still early in the process. We're in the fall, uh, they're under constant review as we get better information each month. We might tweak them a little bit, maybe even before the twenty-fourth and possibly before the final budget as well. As we get better information, we usually like to update our, um, our revenue estimates along the way, uh, as more data comes in. Uh, for instance, in the, the next bullet here, the numbers we're going to see tonight don't include, uh, potential grant revenues. Uh, but actu- actually, after talking to some of my, uh, colleagues on, on the staff here, there are some of the grants that, uh, are far enough along, uh, in the, in the grant award process that we might want to include those in our revenue estimates the next time around. So I'll talk specifically about those when we get to the funds that have uh, grants in them because they're really, they're quite substantial. Uh, there was over five million dollars in grants and just the twenty, twenty-four list that you have in your packet. So we'll talk about those and, and the difference that would make in the funds that those affect. Uh, another footnote and everyone's painfully aware of this, but the town audits um, are not yet complete. Um, I'm, I, I was talking with the auditors even today, exchanging information of the things that they're, they're looking at. So that's still ongoing. Um, and, uh, we're hopeful that that still wraps up soon, but twenty twenty-one is not quite, uh, finished yet, although we don't expect it to change. Um, twenty twenty-two, um, is underway, but hasn't, hasn't, uh, is not nearly as far along, of course. So, uh, the numbers that we're looking at for twenty twenty-two are unaudited and those could possibly change. Just, I know I've said that before, but just so uh, everybody's on the same page there. And then proposition HH, obviously, since that hasn't, that vote hasn't happened yet, I haven't factored anything in there, um, uh, for, for that. Uh, however, uh, thank you, thanks, uh, to Trusty Gator for passing along some contact information. I was able to talk to uh, the accountant for, um, the Wellington Fire District who've, uh, grappled with this a little bit and passed along a tool to me that the county assessor's office um, has available. And, um, so I, I have some idea about what the impact would be for, um, HH should it pass and I'll, I'll, I'll share that when we get to that, that slide. Right, next slide, please. Uh, so this is, this is another, and I, I swear I'll get to the numbers, but this is just another kind of setup and definition, kind of a, a, a slide for those that, uh, um, uh, maybe are watching that haven't, uh, dealt, dealt with municipal finance that much. But what we, the numbers we're going to looking, uh, are going to be looking at come, uh, are organized in funds and the town of Wellington has eight such funds. Uh, there's a general fund. And this is the one we talk about the most. It's where most of the discretionary funding goes, like sales tax and property tax. I differentiate that because it's those kinds of revenues that the board can decide to use in pretty much any way they want to. It's where the discretionary funding is. Uh, and where tax-based programs reside, like the library and, and planning and public safety, those, those sorts of programs. Um, as opposed to, we have three enterprise funds, water, sewer and storm drainage that are different in that they are primarily fee-based services. Doesn't mean that they never get assistance from other outside sources like the general fund, which they have in the past. But they're primarily fee-based services and they're, the idea of them being an enterprise, just the very word, it means they're, they're supposed to be run like a business. Their fees are supposed to be set to capture all operational and capital costs like a business would. And then another just definition thing. Um, even though we use the term fund balance and I'll continue to use the term fund balance even for enterprise funds, um, for the accountants in the audience, enterprise funds don't have fund balances. They have retained earnings because enterprise funds look at long-term debt and long-term assets as well. But for the purpose of the budget, since the budget is a mostly cash flow, cash-based kind of a, uh, exercise, uh, we talk in terms of, uh, fund balance, but what we really mean there is working capital, basically uh, current assets minus current liabilities. That's the, that's the closest comparison to fund balance you'll find in an enterprise fund. So a little, uh, accounting there, probably maybe too much, uh, but just wanted to get our definitions right. And then we have four special revenue funds for streets, for parks, a conservation trust and a library trust. The last two are called trusts and maybe they are, but they look an awful lot like special revenue funds to me. So I needed a little bit of study on that. But these are primarily tax-based programs. Um, though some fees like in, uh, parks and recreation, though some fees are included and, uh, but the idea of them is they're not, they're not meant to pay for themselves by fee generating, like perhaps water or sewer is. Uh, they can, they can generate fees, but they're mostly tax-based and we'll look at all of those as well. So hopefully that wasn't too much, but that just, just kind of set the stage for the definition of the different, uh, funds or different pots of money that we're going to be looking at. Those are the eight funds that we have. Next slide, please. So this is the worst slide that I'll show you tonight. Uh, I'll apologize for it upfront. It's wall-to-wall numbers. And so I, I won't go into great detail on this one because the slides that follow will break all of this down in a way that's a lot more readable. But I, I thought it would be helpful, perhaps, uh, instructive to look at the entire budget of the town of Wellington on one slide and, um, see all of the funds. Now I did combine the two trust funds there on the, on the far right, just because I was running out of room. Uh, but just to, to look at all funds together um, at, at one place and to see the activity involved there, therein. So I start with beginning fund balances and, and this is a new number. This is the number that we've been looking for and I won't recap all the detail, but if, if you recall, uh, we needed to start with the nearly complete audit at the end of Ju-, uh, uh, December twenty twenty-one. Then we went in and updated twenty twenty-two and did whatever accrual entries needed to happen and adjustments needed to happen in twenty twenty-two to get to a good ending balance for twenty twenty-two. That's the trial balance that, uh, we'll give to the auditors to work with. Twenty twenty-three is still ongoing, of course, but we, uh, updated that using our, uh, revenue estimates and estimates of expenditures for the remainder of the year to get to an ending balance for this year, which is the beginning balance for twenty twenty-four, which is the number at the top of the row there. So it's a long road to go there. And for what it's worth, in, in the future, um, it wouldn't, it wouldn't normally be this way. We just, we've got a little behind in our audits, as you know. Normally we would be working with a audit, a closed audit from twenty twenty-two and that's it. We would start from there and update this year and we'd be, so next year it will be not quite this complicated, but just so you know where we are. So I won't dwell on this one just because we're going to break it down. Um, but I, I just will comment just because somebody casually looking at it might say, well, we started fund balance with forty-two million dollars and we ended fund balance with twenty million dollars. You know, what went wrong there? Um, and we'll look at these as we get into the individual funds. But what we have here is a mixture of operations and capital going on. And of course, as you know, we have two very large capital projects going on at the moment with the, um, the construction of the two large plants, the water plant and the wastewater treatment plant. Um, and because of the timing of when, uh, loan proceeds come in versus when the expenditures go out for those large projects, it, it's creating what looks like, uh, a big upside-down number, but, um, we'll look at that when we get into the individual funds, but um, it's not as bad as it looks. As you can see, uh, uh, it just, it, it, because of those two large, unusually large capital projects uh, for a town this size, it, it's, it is skewing things for that. So I thought at least comment on that piece of it. Next slide, please. This one, uh, spend two seconds on, it's the same numbers, but I wanted to show you it in, it's the general fund, a summary of the enterprise funds and the summary of the special revenue funds. It's a little more uh, collapsed version. You'll see this format from time to time. For instance, in the audit reports, they very of- often, um, combine them this way. So I just wanted to give an example of, of what the, uh, the same numbers look like if you were to combine, um, the enterprise funds and the special revenue funds. Um, and then I've off to the right there, I've described what's in each of those columns, but, uh, just a different perspective to look at it because you, you will use this view of, of the world, uh, occasionally. Next slide, please. Okay, so let's step out of the big overview and take a look at the general fund. Next slide, please. So, uh, revenue estimates, general fund, this is general fund only revenue estimates. I've got it in a pie chart, I've got it in a bar chart and I've got it in a ta- numbered table. So we're going to look at the numbers and, and several different ways um, here. But for the revenues for the general fund, um, as I mentioned earlier, as you can see, those two big pie slices, sales tax and property tax, seventy-two percent uh, of all of the revenues are our biggest revenue sources. Uh, we have use tax for building materials, franchise fees, building inspection fees, investments, earnings, and then other revenues make up the rest of that, that pie. And then we'll talk about those numbers in a couple of slides. Next slide, please. This is a, a look at the same, same numbers, but trending over time a little bit, uh, two thousand two actuals, two thousand three projected and then two thousand, uh, uh, twenty-three projected and twenty-four estimated. Uh, so the, I think the main takeaway from this is that our two major revenue sources, property tax and sales tax are trending upward nicely, um, over the course of those three years. So that's a, that's a positive thing. Um, of course, that, that doesn't always happen. If I were to show, if I would have had the time to back this up many more years, you would see much more fluctuation, particularly in sales tax. That's a much more volatile, uh, revenue source than property tax, um, depending on the economy. So this is just three years and they happen to be three years where it was growing. So that's a, it's a good snapshot. Um, the only other thing, uh, in the, the far right there under other revenues, twenty twenty-two, it spiked up there because we got a, got a large, we got a five hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollar Main Street grant that year. So that's, that's what made that bar jump up in that year, just for reference. Next slide, please. And by the way, I, I'm, I'm kind of barreling along through here, um, talked to the mayor a little bit earlier here. If you have questions, please just jot them down and we'll be sure to take some time at the end to, uh, um, to, to go through whatever you need to go through, uh, recognizing that in two weeks we'll come back and, and can, uh, address, uh, questions as well. Uh, okay, so here, here it is a number form, the same numbers again, but property taxes. Um, we have going up eighteen percent. Let me, let me talk about that a little bit. We, we get the assessed value, um, numbers from the county, the county assessor's office. And, uh, those numbers went up um, from last year to this year and that, uh, drove, uh, our property tax revenues go up because we take the assessed valuation and we apply the mill rate for, um, for the town of Wellington. Now here, here's a little interesting work for this year. The mill rate, uh, in the current year is thirteen point oh nine six. So without doing anything, that mill rate would actually drop in twenty twenty-four to twelve point four three nine. That's about a five percent drop if you're just looking at percentages. Uh, and that's because the, part of the mill rate was a, um, a bonded debt from a long time ago that gets paid off this year. And so just in the natural course of events from that bond being paid off, the mill rate does drop, uh, by that point six five seven, uh, um, number. So, uh, just thought I would mention that. So the eighteen percent is the assessed val- the, the net of the assessed valuation that the assessor's office gave us going up, um, less that offset of the mill rate going down. Uh, sale, sales tax, uh, we have going up. It's, I've got it rounded there to four percent. It's, it's three point eight percent actually. And what we, what we do there to look at that number is uh, a, a couple of things. One thing we, we look at the town of Wellington's unique mixture of uh, what its tax base is for sales tax. So we actually look at, we get detailed information uh, from the county, uh, about who, who pays sales tax. And so we, we look at pretty much the top twenty or so uh, taxpayers there and to get a feel for what is the tax base, um, um, and it's, it's a, it's a small town, so you, you probably know what the tax, what the tax base is. I, uh, because there's not that many businesses in each category, I, I can't, uh, really mention any names, but, uh, what I, what we do is we look at that tax base, whether it be, uh, you know, fuel sales or restaurants, building materials, uh, grocery stores, there, there's a, there's a bunch of different categories of sales tax. And then the state budget office does a really handy quarterly, um, economics report where they look at the economy, uh, for state of Colorado and, um, and the revenue outlook. And they break it down into those same categories. So applying the, the information we got from the state budget office to our unique, unique mix of categories for, uh, sales tax, uh, we came up with a three point eight percent increase, um, estimate. And that's just an estimate for, uh, for next year. That's where that number came from. I, uh, I talk about that a little bit more because these are, these are the big revenue sources. Use tax, that's a use tax for building materials. Um, this is where there might be a, a project that happens in the town of Wellington, uh, maybe there's hail damage to a roof and somebody has their, their house re-roofed and so there's building materials purchased. Uh, the, the sales tax or use tax, it's a different word for the same thing, uh, can be, uh, captured on the, the materials related to that project and come back to the town. Uh, franchise fees related to, um, electric, gas, uh, cable TV, functions like that. And then again, we, uh, generally use, uh, the state budget office's estimates for some of the increases there. And we'll make one other comment here. You'll see under investment earnings, um, in twenty twenty-three, the number just jumped right up from twenty twenty-two actuals. Um, so that, that's pretty significant, but as you, as you probably just noticed in the last year or so, uh, interest rates have been going up. Most of the town's uh, portfolio is held with Colorado Trust and it, um, it, it holds the, the town's money in, in very secure, uh, assets and securities. Um, and it's currently earning about five point five percent. If I look back just last summer, it was about two point two percent. So it's, it, it's gone up quite a bit and, uh, that's, uh, been a big benefit and actually several of the budgets, budgets as well as the general fund here. Uh, okay, I think that's, that's probably good on that slide. Next slide, please. So let's talk about expenditures. This is the expenditure side of the equation, um, for the general fund still. We're still on the general fund, the proposed budget for expenditures. Uh, in the general fund, there's that largest share to the sheriff's office, twenty-four percent. Um, other, uh, departments include, uh, planning, uh, is taken, is accounted for in the general fund, uh, as well as the library, as well as public works. Um, I will say however, and we'll get into the whole administrative overhead question, um, in, in just a few slides as well. Public Works, um, is fifteen percent of the general fund expenditure budget. However, uh, because public works includes positions that are charged out to the water fund, the sewer fund, uh, and, and others, um, some of the overhead comes back to pay for that section of the pie. So if, if you net that out, the public works is actually more like nine percent of the, uh, of the general fund expenditures, not fifteen percent, just because they, they've got that component that is a part of the overhead. And we'll talk about overhead in just a couple of slides. Um, and then the rest of the, the pie. Um, and then the rest of the, the pie chunks there are the administrative overhead pieces. Uh, administration, finance, clerk's office, human resources, information, talk, technology, that sort of thing. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so let's look at the general fund in particular over time a little bit here. So this is two thousand and twenty-two actual, so last year actual numbers, again, un-audited, but. We feel pretty good about them, but they're un-audited. Two thousand and twenty-three estimated and then the two thousand and twenty-four proposed budget. So uh, kind of the. I suppose the biggest takeaway is from here, I'll, if I start in just the bottom two lines there are revenues over expenditures and transfers. In some other world, you might call that net income, but it's basically a revenue over expenditures. Uh, was positive. It was in the black each of those three years. So that's another good uh, good new budget news point to make there. I'll try to make the good news budget points for you, but I'll also try to point out where it's not as good and, and talk about that. In this case, it's, it's a good point. And you, and because of that, you can see at the ending fund balance there at the bottom of the page. It climbs a little bit each year. So that's, that's another good point. That's that nine point one million dollars in that far right-hand corner there that I mentioned earlier, that is um. A fund balance for the general fund and two point seven million dollars is the reserve requirement. So you're, you're far ahead of that. Uh, so we have uh, beginning fund balance at the top, the revenues we just talked about. The transfers in is administrative overhead from the other departments, and I will talk about that separately, that one million eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand proposed there. Expenditures is operating expenditures. It, it, it bounces around a bit because of the way we've uh, handled. Administrative overhead transfers over the, over the, these three years. We have capital projects and then we had in two thousand and twenty-two, we had some. Uh, dollars that were transferred out of the general fund to assist the water and sewer fund. And we are allowed, um, I will, don't want to practice law here, but uh, Ca- California, Colorado law allows us to uh. Fund an enterprise fund um, up to ten percent of the revenues and. Uh, be sure to correct me if I'm ever wrong there, but ten percent of the revenues. Uh, and still call it an enterprise fund. Um, and that's, that's kind of an important distinction. There are some benefits to calling it enterprise funds still. So that, those happened in two thousand and twenty-two for, for two thousand and twenty-three, and we'll talk about this when we get to the sewer fund. We're actually proposing a, a three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar transfer from. Uh, the general fund to the sewer fund in two thousand and twenty-three, and I'll talk about that when I get to that fund. I just wanted to point it out here. Uh, and there's that three hundred and ninety-nine thousand there on the far right at the bottom that I mentioned is the in the black uh, for this year. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so I, I, I don't want to overdo this, but I want to talk a little bit about administrative overhead, so I'm going to try real hard not to over, overdo it. Because there are ins and outs here that can take us all night if we're not careful. Um, on the slide before, if you could go back one slide quickly, please. Um, transfers in to the general fund of one million eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. That's for two thousand and twenty-four. Okay, next slide, please. That, this is what makes up coming into the general fund, that million eight, eight hundred and eighty-nine. Um, we have um. Direct overhead, we'll call it, it's for uh, water and, water and sewer, and then we have indirect for um. Those uh, for those services like finance and IT and HR, those kind of services. We're, just so we get our definitions right, indirect versus uh, direct. So direct would be like um. The, the management of uh, public works that's in the general fund, but manages the water fund and the sewer fund, for instance. Because their, those salaries are in the general fund, we charge a portion of them out, not all of them, but a portion of them out to the water and sewer fund. So that's why you see two hundred and, it happens to be split uh, equally between the two. Um, for the positions that are in the general fund, which is pretty much the, the, the director, the deputy director. Uh, program administrator, and then there's engineers, three engineers, I think four with the new one. So those positions are, are home based in the general fund, but they're charged out to the water sewer fund. Um, in, in order to recapture that portion of the cost. The indirect pieces would be. Uh, um, the, the finance director uh, for one, the, a- as I said, city clerk, HR, IT, all of those administrative positions. Are, are charged out to these various different funds, not only water and sewer, but also streets and drainage and parks. And so when you add those all up, it gets to that one, that one million eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand. Um, let's try the next slide. Please. So this is from the perspective, I picked one fund, the water fund. This would be from the perspective of the water fund. What does it pay for administrative services? The last slide was. What does the general fund get and where does it come in from? This is what does the water fund pay? So if the water fund were. Again, it's an enterprise, so it's supposed to be capturing all of its own costs, capital in, in, including overhead. If the, if the water fund were a water district and it was separate and by itself somehow, it would have to um. Purchase services like civil engineering and um. Payroll and accounts payable and IT and services like that, it would get a bill for. This is the equivalent of that. If you look at the water fund and we can break it down like this uh, in the budget, so it's as clear as possible. I know a question came up at one point is that it, it seemed to be a bit of a black box in the past. I hope this breaks out a little bit more. It's just that if you are a water enterprise and you're running that business, what do you pay for finance? Uh, and what do you pay for IT and, and human resources and that sort of thing? Uh, so this would be, this is the bill and we'll see this when we get to the water fund, but this is the bill that's on the water fund side. Uh, five hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. So I wanted to show that perspective as well. And I think I have one more slide. I may be pushing it here. What I was trying to do here is now to compare, because it's changed a bit over the years. I wanted to compare what, what's in the two thousand and twenty-three budget with what's in the two thousand and twenty-four proposed. Let's see if I can do that. So this is administrative overhead. In, in the general fund. So these are all the administrative overhead type positions, administration, finance clerk, all those that I've talked about. And how they're budgeted in the general fund. And as you see in two thousand and twenty-three, one million seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, one point eight million dollars. For all these positions was budgeted in the general fund in two thousand and twenty-three, the current year. Because the rest of it was directly budgeted in the special funds that was being charged to. That is one way to do it. Um. And if it's done well, and if it's done consistently, it can work. Um. We found it to be a, a little bit uh, confusing. And maybe not as transparent as could be because you could not go to one place. And for instance, if somebody wanted to know, well, what does it cost to do finance in the town of Wellington? There's not one place you could go to do that, uh, because those were, those positions were spread around. Uh, so what the change we made this year, and you see in the center column there, two thousand and twenty-four, is that we moved those administrative salaries. Back into the general fund. That's why it jumped up from one point eight million to three point eight million, three point nine million. But then you see that bottom line, but you have the overhead transfer coming in. So when you look at the very bottom line, a million eight. To two million, that difference there is essentially the merit and cola pays. And I think there's a couple of positions. There's a. There's a planner, there's an engineer, there's a portion of a library uh, person in there as well. Um, so uh, hopefully that's not, not too much, but I just wanted to show, since it's bounced around a bit, the difference in how it was handled in twenty-three versus twenty-four. It basically, any system can be made to work if you're consistent with it and if you do it well. Um. We thought this one was a little better, a little more uh, transparent. If you needed to look for what does it cost for HR or IT, you can now go to one budget and find that. Uh, so that probably enough said on administrative overhead, but I, I just, I wanted to. Fit that in there. I, I promise I won't drone on about that for every presentation, but I did wanted to fit that in there at least this time, since it has jumped around a little bit. All right, next slide, please.
Um, Don, would you like to pause for questions?
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
If there are any.
Okay, absolutely.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good spot. Trusty Gator?
Okay, um, so I understand what you're saying about the increases. So the question that I have is I, I did not include benefits. I just looked at wages. What would make sense is that we are increasing the wages within pub, within public works, within finance, within IT, because we're pulling those out of what was currently. Previously included in the wages of water fund, sewer fund, drainage fund, et cetera.
Right.
The problem I have is I'm looking at just the wages. Again, this yours included wages and benefits. Well. I'm still seeing an eight percent increase in the water fund wages and salaries year over year and a five percent increase in sewer, just looking at those two. So how are we still seeing a salary increase in those funds after taking out all those administrative wages? Because to me, we haven't. Moved those costs. We've just increased costs because per water fund, our wages and salaries in twenty-three was four hundred and ninety-six thousand, four sixty-eight. And our proposed for twenty-four is five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight, which is an eight percent increase, or forty-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars. But. There's no new FTE in the water fund. So my question is, is because we're increasing salaries, so we've got a two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollar increase in admin, we've got a two hundred and forty-three thousand dollar. So admin is a forty-six percent increase, finance is a seventy-one percent increase, eight clerk is a thirty-eight percent increase, HR is an eighty percent increase, IT is a fifty-five percent increase. Planning is a forty-one percent increase. Public Works is an eighty-one percent increase, libraries a seventeen percent increased, three street fund is a thirty-eight percent increase. If I just take those ones right there. That's two million dollars of increased just wages, no benefits taken into account with that. So I'm really confused how we're transferring that money. But we're not decreasing the wages and salaries that were supposedly being accounted for in the water and sewer funds before as the two biggest. I know that was in other places too. But those were the two largest ones.
Uh, so I, I, I would probably have to look at the, the details of the numbers you're looking at. You said water fund was up eight percent and sewer.
Five percent. Correct, from twenty-three to twenty-four.
Okay, so I, I can. I can look at that and uh, get back to you on that. I don't, I don't have the, the details. In, in my head, but you're, you're mainly looking at the wages and benefits of the fund itself, not, not these, not the administrative side, but on the.
I just looked at, period. I just looked at each fund. I looked at what are the, I didn't do benefits. I just straight looked at wages. And I just looked at each one of those for each department. And what I'm seeing is I'm seeing massive increases that don't line up with the transfers out that we're doing. So I'm trying, because what would make sense. Is to see one point eight nine million increases that are offset by that decrease in the appropriate funds, because. We're also now adding in these transfers. So what it looks like to me is we're still paying. More in wages and salaries in those funds, but now we're tacking on an additional half a million dollars in transfers out. So I'm trying to understand where is this offset, because we didn't see it, we should have seen a decrease in other costs in those funds that were offset by an increase in the transfer.
Okay, I, I, I get it. I, let me do a little bit of study on that. I, I looked at it from this perspective. I didn't look at it from that, that specific perspective, but I'm happy to do that.
Okay. And then my other concern is that across the board, seeing a huge increase, uh, we're just are looking at general fund right now. Um, basically, we're seeing an increase of revenues of potentially nine percent, but we're increasing expenditures by thirty-one percent. Now, that does take into account. We moved all those things into the general fund, so when you subtract out all of those, we're seeing basically an eleven percent increase in expenses. So we're actually increasing expenses by a higher amount than we're incre- than we had revenue increase, which is a concern to me. I understand the. Fund balance is still positive, which is a good thing, but I do not like that we're increasing expenses faster than we're increasing revenue. If, at minimum, we should be keeping our expenditures maxed at what we're expected increase in revenues. So I shouldn't see an eleven percent increase in expenses. To a nine percent increase in revenue.
Yeah.
Um, and we haven't gotten to other funds yet, so I'll save those comments for there. So, I mean, there's a lot of information. I appreciate the detail you put into the budget. Um. The numbers aren't good. They're really not good.
Thank you, Trusty Gator. Just daily.
I just want to say I really appreciate the breakdown for the indirect indirect costs. Uh, that's really helpful for me. Thank you very much.
That's amazing. Number ten.
Fantastic presentation and I um, echo Trusty Daly's sentiments about the breaking down direct and indirect costs. Very helpful. Thank you.
Christine.
Not yet.
Perfect. Thank you, Don. Please continue.
Okay, uh, next slide. We just have a, a, just a few slides left. We're gonna, we're gonna talk about the individual uh, non-general fund, funds now. Uh, but there's a bunch to go over here. So first fund, uh, we're gonna talk about the street fund. I will hit some highlights here. Um, beginning balance in two thousand and twenty-four, four point three million dollars, um, revenues of two point two million. Um. Uh, focus on that, that transfer out to the capital projects fund. So the capital projects program you saw last week of one point nine million dollars. Um, you know, that's what's driving uh, a, a minus almost million dollars in the fund balance there, uh, from four point three million down to three point three million. Uh, however, this is one of those examples of where, where I said I, I probably need to take a closer look at what grants. Are far enough along in the process, because if they've been awarded, if they've been a, applied for and awarded, and it's just a matter of doing the project to get reimbursed. Those could be included in uh, revenue estimates. I tend to be pretty conservative about grants because sometimes they're more wishful than others, but. Um, just working um, with my colleagues in public works, it looks like some of these uh, may well be um. Able to be factored into um, revenue estimates. In, in fact, there's, there are grants in the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-four grant schedule. Of almost one point three million dollars uh, that are good, can be applied towards projects like the Old Town Street repairs and the Cleveland Avenue improvements. Um, so that one point nine million dollars, um, the largest portion of that is, are big projects like that. So I think once we factor in those grants, th- this is kind of a worst-case scenario. It's. Could we do those projects with fund balance alone if we, if we wanted to or needed to, if the board desired to do that? And, and you could, but it never feels good for the fund balance to go down by that much. But fortunately. Uh, your town staff has worked very hard in getting, uh, getting these grants. And so I think we're going to be able to factor those in and for, for the next iteration on the twenty-fourth. Um, uh, I wouldn't be surprised if, if we've got a different number there uh, than that negative nine seventy-six, but this. So I just, I thought I'd, I'd bring that up on this one. Uh, so three, three million, three eighty-two, and the reserve requirement for this fund is three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. So we're, we're substantially over that. Okay, next fund, please. Our next slide, please. Next fund. Okay, this is where it gets a little more uh, challenging. I told you I would tell you all the good news when there's good news and that uh, I would tell you the uh. Not as good news when there, when there isn't. So let me, let's talk about the water fund and this is. Over time and it, a- again, because of the big capital project for the, the treatment plant. The numbers, because we're including operations and capital together here, it, it, it is, it, it looks dramatic because of the numbers. Uh, that we have there. You have a really large fund balance because you have so much cash with trustee from that, uh, that loan that we got. But then as we spend it down, of course, the fund balance could spend down as well. Uh, so I wanted to show the three years, um, but we're going to focus on uh, two thousand and twenty-four. Um, I, I will say one thing from this three-year snapshot there. You see in the revenues in two thousand and twenty-two, it went from seven point four million, dropped down to just under six million. Uh, before going back up again. That, that, tha- that is part of the, the issue with this fund is that because we had such a wet year this year. Uh, working with uh, our, our public works folks, so we um, took a close look at the number and what we've earned in water sales so far this year. And we've shaved about nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars off of what we originally uh, expected. When we were here presenting the budget last year. Uh, so that's, that's a, as a, a major part of a, it's almost a million dollars worth of, of where this fund. Um, is, is lacking a little bit. So I just wanted to mention that. That's why that, that is dropping so much. It's because we had a very wet year. Uh. You, we don't anticipate that again for next year. You never know, um, but next year is more of what a normal year would look like. The other thing I'll mention here, uh, just while we have the, the three-year view of it up, is that. Um, in the two thousand and twenty-two column for expenditures, see it's a, it's a little bit higher than for two thousand and twenty-three. What we've done there is we, we've accrued because we, we've got an additional bill um, from the uh, Nor- North Pudra Irrigation District. That water payment that you've, you've heard about and that is actually on the agenda a little later this evening. Um, there's a six hundred and forty thousand dollar water bill outstanding there. Um, for water services in two thousand and twenty-two. So we, we accrued that expenditure back into two thousand and twenty-two. So that's why that number is a little bit higher. Than the other years by, by that six hundred uh, and forty thousand dollars. So that number that you'll be talking about later in the evening is, is baked into these already, just, just so you're aware. Um, yeah, let's see. So we, we end, so here, let me tell you, let me try to say some good news here. You, you, we end the year. With three point two uh, million dollars in fund balance for the water fund. So that, that's the good news. And the reserve requirement is one point one six million. So that's the board reserve requirement. So good to go there. Where we're short is our debt service coverage. So we have uh, loan agreements for both uh, water. Fund, uh, the pro- plant and the sewer fund. And you'll find that in both cases, uh, our debt service coverage is short there. We should in this, uh, the way the debt service coverage works is you take a hundred and ten percent of your debt service plus your, your expenditures, your operating expenses. A hundred and ten percent of your debt service plus your your expenditures, your operating expenditures, including your uh, overhead. And you add that up and then uh, you you compare it to what your operating revenues are. And in the um, water fund. It works out to, uh, we're about five hundred thousand dollars uh. In operating revenue short to meet that debt service coverage. Um, and what that normally means is that you have a plan or you work towards um, meeting that. Um, you have a plan in the future. So let's let's go to the next slide, because the water fund is is kind of unique. In that the water fund, the way we've accounted for the water fund here is that there are actually three components to the water fund. There's. Water fund operations, water sales and the in the operating expenditures that go along with that. Uh, there's the expenditures that uh, come from the impact fee that's collected. Uh, and then there's expenditures that come from the wa- raw water fee that's collected. In in many agencies, if you have a a fee like that, like an impact fee that is forced, can only be used for a specific purpose. Those are very often in a fund of their own, a special revenue fund of their own. So that they can be accounted for and tracked and make sure you, you know, they're spent for just the things they're going to be spent for. Uh, for whatever historical reason, uh, we have combined those impact fees. In fact, we do that in almost all funds uh, within the operations as well. So what this slide does is it breaks out. The raw water. Reserve and the impact fee reserve as if it was a separate fund, even though it's not. As if it was a separate fund from operations. To give us a better view of, well, what would operations look like? If we didn't have. I- if it wasn't mixed in with the impact fees and the raw water fee. So. I I apologize for the complexity of it, but um. It it's an important look because wh- when you're. Setting water rates and versus setting impact fee rates. You have to know the difference between the two. Uh, your your water rate consultants with that were uh, uh, working with the town several months ago. They would have had to have done this uh, in order to get the numbers for what what would your impact rates be versus what with your, for instance. Yeah, built into these numbers, I don't think I mentioned. Into the operating numbers is the five percent recommended increase. For water rates. It's built in here. Uh, hasn't, it's not not been uh, finally approved yet, but it is built in and a four percent increase for the impact fees. So those are built in. They had to be broken back out so that those numbers can be looked at. So when you look at it that way, if you look at operations, we start with a minus eight hundred and eighty-three thousand at the beginning of twenty twenty-four. Now, curiously, if you remember on the last slide, I said. We lost nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in revenue in twenty twenty-three for the water fund because it was a wet year. Had it not been for that nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, we would have actually had a. An in the black barely, but in the black operations um. Fund balance reserve. But because of that drop in the in the um, water revenue, we ended up with that eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar minus to begin with. If these three reserves were split apart. So then you have revenues. I'm gonna, let me come back to that intra-fund loan line because it's a new one. And then you have your operating expenditures, your debt service, capital projects. There's the trans, there's that five hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar transfer out to the general fund. Um, and we end up with a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Well, how how do we do that? Um, uh, towards the top of the page, I've I've got a line called the intra-fund loan. That's actually a term I made up. Um, because there 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 are cer- there are certainly inter-fund loans. I mean, fu- one fund, the general fund can loan another fund money or vice versa. Those happen, those are fairly common, and uh, usually that that's a board-approved thing, and there's usually a, you know, term of payments when you're going to pay it back. Is there interest involved? That kind of thing. Intra-fund loan just means we've got these three reserves all within one phone, a fund. Um, the impact fee uh. Fund needed an extra three million dollars to fi- to finish out. Uh, because that's that's one of the funding sources along with the uh, the the bo- the the loan, of course, for the water treatment plant. Um, the water treatment plant, the the bond for the water treatment plant was was not enough. Unlike the sewer treatment plant, the water treatment plant bond was not enough. To pay for the entire project. So. Uh, an additional funding source was was always going to be unnecessary there. So in this case. To keep the balance at the bottom, um, positive, a three million dollar. Uh, loan would be needed wherever that comes from. In this particular case, and this is just me at this point. We have the raw water fund had ten million dollars in it. If we did an intra-fund loan from that reserve to the impact fees reserve, it balances that out. Similarly, for operations to balance that out, you could make, you could do a similar, a similar loan. So it's it's a little bit semantics, um, uh, unless we ever split this fund into its three uh, three components. Right now, it's a little bit semantics. You can step back, and that's why I can say for the purposes of the loan agreement. Um, you know, or uh, for the purposes of the fund, we're meeting our reserve requirements, even though we're not remedi- meeting our debt service uh. Requirements at this point. Um, so that, let me see if I covered all the points there. Yeah, so at the bottom right there, there's that three million, two sixty-nine. Again, that's the combination of all three of those reserves. This is a a little painful to look at, but I I I wanted to. I I think it's important to show that uh, even though. The fund as a whole together, when you take all the parts together. Looks reasonably good, I mean, three million dollar ending balance. The operations portion of it, if that was a standalone fund, which in many agencies it would be, you'd have those other revenues in a separate fund. Um, it would be uh, upside down right now or having to borrow three million dollars from some other fund to keep it uh, afloat. And that is with the five percent uh, you know, recommended increase. Um, built into the revenues. That is the water fund. Let let me talk about the sewer fund. It's a little similar. Next, next slide, please.
Can we talk about this before we move on?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I'd like to, first of all, preface, please respond in kindness, trustee Gator. Don has spent a lot of time on this and uh, the comments he made earlier, I did not appreciate those. I don't think Don did either. I would like us to approach staff with respect. So in, you can disagree and have your points, but please do so in kindness. Trustee Gator, go forward.
So my first concern with um. Bringing out the intra-fund loans. I I appreciate this is documented. This is how we got into the situation with water funds before. It wasn't documented, but this is what was happening. There was a deficit in the operation side. That was being covered from impact fees and raw water. So we didn't realize we were upside down on operations for like a decade. And then that killed our fund balance. And so then we had to jet, put rates through the roof. So my concern is, is that, sure, we do a loan for this year, but what do we do next year? Like, we're. We're not solving anything and there's no more money left now in raw water, right? So that's the first concern with that is I don't want to go down the road that got us in the mess that we we are trying to get out of right now. This is more organized than it was done back then. I don't think it was, there was any thought behind it. They just did it. Um. So that is. A big concern that I've got there. Um. The fact that we're. Three million dollars underwater in the water fund is a massive concern, and that doesn't. Take into account, because that's that's assuming all the CIP is out in its separate fund. Um. This. We are now seeing the concerns that I had years ago about taking on these projects is that we took on projects that were bigger than we could afford to pay for. So we've got to figure out some way to. Address that that's not just taking money from our raw water fund that we can't. Come through and address. Um, the other concern that I have is that. We're still looking at an increase, so we're assuming revenues are going to increase by twenty-seven percent. I understand those are volatile. But our expenditures. Are going up by fourteen percent, but then if you add in. The transfers were really increasing expenditures by twenty-three percent. So when we're in a situation where. Our water fund is. Currently in the proposed budget is three million dollars underwater, we're increasing expenditures by twenty-four percent. That is not. We talk about fiscal responsibility that just doesn't even come close. So we have got to figure out a way. To fix that, that is not just taking a loan out from our raw water fund. Because that's, that is a very short-sighted, short-term solution. To, we've got to figure out where, I I don't know what the problem is, and this is where we come back to the problem of not knowing what is going on in our finances is I don't know why we're here. I can see numbers, and these are, these are really bad numbers, but I don't know why we're here.
Sure, I I share that, I share that concern, um. That three million dollars it uh, loan for operations, it 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 to make, for this to make sense, it would have to be paid back over time. And ultimately, that would have to come, come out of rates. I mean, how much time that would be, um, that would be something that could be discussed and what the terms would be. Because it's all in one fund, it it has been um. Obscure somewhat, and what I'm trying to do is break it out here, so at least it sheds the light on it, and we can at least. Talk about the numbers and come up with a plan. Um, I I will say just uh, one comment on the expenditures. The uh, on the revenue side, of course, the weather can vary things a lot as far as how much revenue we get. Uh, on the expenditure side, it's the um, you know, the the MPIC water lease agreement payments that. That that change a lot. I mean, we've got the end-of-year estimate for. Um, it that's in the budget for twenty twenty-four is two point seven million dollars, um. Um, which is considerably higher than what we had in there for twenty twenty-three. So that that number. At, that drives a lot of the the fluctuation and the change. Um, i- in the budget there, i- if you see that jumping around on the expenditure side.
Yeah, and that's why I think that, again, it's not tied to that, because it's, this is where we have to be paying attention, but we're approving in a budget, because. All those extra positions that we're looking at. Add into driving up those transfer numbers. Every time we approve a new position, that goes into those transfer numbers. Every time we approve additional things within the general fund that get tied back indirectly or directly to the water and sewer funds. Those get tied into those transfer numbers. So yes, we can't control the NPIC, right? That's something unfortunate. We're working on what we can, but we can't do that. But this is when we talk about those small amounts for things, those start to add up. And when, again, if we're looking at a fund that is. Again, three million dollars underwater, that's a huge problem. We have to figure out how to fix that, right? We can't change the NPIC number. So we need to figure out, we we can't change the loan number. That that's gone, right? We we chose the project, we have it now. What we have to figure out is how do we fix it? And again, it needs to be fixed. The way that it kind of got addressed before was it meant a huge rate hike, which, again, the five percent ain't going to touch that. So we as a board need to figure that out. But the thing that we need to understand is when we're approving things, even if it's in other budgets, if those tie back into that direct transfers. Those are things that will also drive up the need for us. To fix this. We cannot, well, we can choose to not deal with this, but if we choose to not deal with this in two years. The board is going to be in a far worse position than we were in twenty twenty. So it's either we address it now, or it's going to be an even bigger problem for future boards. And again, I don't know the answers, but we need to have serious conversations about how we're going to fix it.
Yeah, very good points. Thank you, trustee Gator. Trustee Daly.
I assume since they are finalized, all the grants that we have are already included in revenues. Um, regarding. Water funds, or is there additional revenues that are potential?
Um, no, the 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 grants are not factored in yet, but my recollection. Is I I don't recall any grant. Well, no, I take that back. There there was a grant for the, for one of the capital projects in the water fund.
I think it was the. One point three million. Uh.
Just look here, I've got it, got a grants tab.
Anybody have the page number on the grants? The beautiful, beautiful grant page. My favorite part. Um, oh, found it. The American Rescue Plan Act Water Fund Help Stabilize Utility Rates, one point three million dollars. I feel like that one's established. It could potentially already be included in.
That that is in there. Yes, that that one is in there.
Okay.
Correct.
I'm curious if there's any other grants that we have in process. Um. That could potentially assist in this as well. Um, that's a follow-up question, not for now, but that's just. Because I know there's a lot of things in motion, and as you mentioned that before, so that's great news. Um. Otherwise, oh, and the other thing I do appreciate is that obviously there's a significant shortfall here. And I appreciate that you came with a possible solution. I know this, in this scenario, it's hard, but rather than just saying. Bad, 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 you're like, something could be possible. So I really appreciate coming with a creative opportunity.
You, trustee Daly. Trustee Mason? Number ten. Trustee again.
I appreciate what you've done. We wouldn't know that uh, we're in kind of a bad situation on certain stuff without the detail that you got and really appreciate you. Expanding on that and bring it to our forefront. So thank you.
Trustee Dietz.
So this kind of goes back to, I will have to agree with trustee Gator on a lot of the items he did bring up. Um, but I had also sent an email out earlier in the year stressing my concerns about the excessively wet season that we were having, and I was curious how that was going to greatly affect. The income coming in. I didn't really get a lot of response on that, and then we had found out that we were excessively negative and. The, with North Pooter, which is not in our control at all. Um. But I agree, this is a Band-Aid fix for a very massive problem. I am grateful. It's not often that before previously, we didn't have a lot of, this is your problem, but let me show you one option. Kind of thing as far as the finances went. So I do appreciate this option, but this is robbing Peter to pay Paul. And at the end of the day, we still have a large issue, and in two years, you're, we're going to have a massive issue. So I would love to know what we can do to get more creative on this, whether that is leasing our raw, raw water shares. I know we did lease some this year. Um, North Pooter, to my understanding, leased those for us and. The other thing I would like to know, and if we can find a way to track. The millions of gallons of water we're losing above that average, they said, I would think it was three percent. I don't know, Megan could agree. Tell me what that percentage was again, but. Tracking the millions of gallons of water we're losing, I get there's evaporation and. Cleaning out fire hydrants and stuff like that, but millions of gallons. Is being lost above that. And not being billed out, but the residents are still paying for it. So I would love to know if we have leaks somewhere that we are not aware of in main lines. Or if it's being improperly billed somewhere or not being billed somewhere. I'd like to see additional options on this. I don't want to do a Band-Aid fix. And send it down the line for later is my main goal here. So I will agree with a lot, but I am still grateful. For the breakdown, because a lot of this we have not seen before, so it's good to see it. Broke out, and I'm very grateful for that. I know, Mr. Rhodes, you did not put us in this situation. You are trying to help us get out of it. Um, so I am grateful for the effort in that matter, but we still need to, as a board, realize that. That maybe this isn't a year for extra spending. Maybe this is a year for trying to figure out. How to get our town out of this massive debt.
Thank you. Please continue.
Clarification really quick. On the art, but grant, that was from twenty twenty, that those funds are expended. So just so that no one's thinking, we have one point three for water. We did receive that, I think, in twenty-one and twenty-two, we received two tranches. One went to the water fund, and I don't remember if the second one went to the water or sewer, but it went to, both went to water.
Yeah, it's included in the actuals on two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah, yeah, so that that's not available anymore, so we don't have it ongoing.
Thank you. Please continue, Mr. Rhodes.
Next slide, please. I'm going to move on to uh, the sewer fund. Um. So this is still the not as good news phase of the presentation. Um. I I was able to break out. The different funds in the water fund, because about four years ago, uh, the. The finance director at that time did an analysis of that fund. Um, and broke the, broke those, those um. Reserves out. So I I went through an exercise to carry that forward. You know, what in, what revenue came into the various reserves, what expenditures were paid from the reserve so that I could uh, break out in the slide we just saw. Uh, there, there was not a similar analysis done at that time for the sewer fund, so that is one I would still need to work on. Um, because, of course, the sewer fund has uh, impact fees as well. So th- this is, I don't have a separate slide for this one. This is the combined fund. Uh, but in fact, that's true in other cases where there's other funds with our impact fees. Um, i- as well, streets and parks and 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 others, so um. You know, it is something that we could do more broadly, but water and sewer are are the bigger ones, biggest ones. So this is the only slide I have on this one, and it's a um. The story here is. Uh, somewhat similar. Uh, we have. Let me see. The transfers in, in in order to get that four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars at the end of the fund, at the end of um, twenty twenty-four, you might remember. Ages ago, early in the presentation, I mentioned that there was a transfer out of the general fund in twenty twenty-three, we're suggesting. Uh, of three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. That's ten percent of the sewer fund uh, revenues are rounded down for that year. Um, and with that transfer uh, in that year, we maintain um. a balance of $455,000 that flows to the ending balance in 2024, and that allows us to maintain our reserve requirements or the reserve policy that the board set last last December. Without that $334,000, we would have been just under the reserve requirement. The reserve requirement is $346,000, and so this gives us 455. So here's a case where, in order to make this fund work to meet our reserve requirements, the General Fund did need to help out in that case, and that's what that $334,000 is. So that that's a recommendation, that's that's for the board to decide, but that is that is what we've got plugged in there in order to make that fund balance end up that way. Otherwise, we do have, you see in the in the capital projects here, of course, the the main portion of it is finishing that treatment plant. And, you know, fortunately, in this in this case, there is enough debt altogether, loan available to to pay for that project. So I don't have to go looking for $3 million for that one. Let's see, and there are some grants available. There is a a grant in 2020, 2024 for the Viewpoint Lift Station. And that that affects the Sewer Fund, so that that will help there. Once I fold in those revenue estimates of those grants that have been awarded at least, that will make these numbers look a little bit better in in some of the funds. So I just thought that was worth, that was worth mentioning. So this one is the the, I I can't, whereas I can't break out the the reserve just yet, though that's something that we can we can work on. I just didn't have a good starting point like I did for the Water Fund. So I'll need to, I'll need to go back farther, and that's that's not always easy to do. But the the issue here is the the fund balance to get it to to meet our reserve requirement, the General Fund needed to help out. And the second thing is, we don't have the debt service coverage again, because if you look at the debt service of $2.5 million at 110%, the expenditures and the and the overhead, I'm out of, I'm out of debt service coverage by about $800,000 in this particular, in this particular fund. I think those are the key points on the Sewer Fund. We'll go to the next slide and talk about the Drainage Fund.
Ask a quick question for Sewer.
Oh, sure.
So with the debt service fund requirements, it's not necessarily that we have to reach that, but have a proposed plan in action to approach the appropriate fund balance? Is that the case? So if, I mean, the money for this comes from rates. So if we had a plan in order to recover the the amount that we needed to get to the debt service fund balance, that works for the loan. Is that right?
That's normally the way that works, that the the loan agreement that I I looked at did didn't specifically, that I could see, and I didn't read the whole document, but the the section that talked about the debt service covenant covenant, it didn't specifically spell that out. But typically, that's the way it works, is you you need to have a plan in place to get there. And that normally satisfies that requirement.
Is that, is that plan like a multiple year potential, or is that just one year, maybe?
It it's typically multiple year.
Multiple year. Okay, thank you.
Is there a way to find that out and report that back to us this next go-round?
Yes, I'll I'll find that out. I'll find out the specifics on that, yeah, because I'm 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 talking about what what you would typically see, but let me find out if there's specifics with this loan agreement, yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Trusty Gator?
Yeah, so the get to Sewer. The concern that I have with the Sewer Fund is, again, we're looking at estimating a 14% increase in revenues. Expenditures were decreasing by 16%, which that's great year over year, but again, when you add in the transfers, it is actually an 18% increase year over year. So it's like we're cutting down on expenses in one spot, but we're adding more into the transfers. So again, we've got higher raise in expenses than we have in revenues again. And especially with this fund being so low down, I have huge concerns. And again, with this one, just because we've got, I mean, we've got a $2.5 million debt service on that fund, that's, again, this comes back to, we've got to figure this out on our end as a board of what are we gonna approve? And again, it comes back to not just, because yes, there's only so many things, right? We we have to buy chemicals, we have to have people that run the plant. Like, there's only so much I get that we can cut from the operational side. And that's where we need to actually be paying close attention to those other things, because two out of the four FTEs that we're looking at for this year directly impact the transfer rates for water and sewer funds. Like, those directly relate to that, because those are part of those indirect costs that are charged out to those funds. So that's something that, again, we need to look at that with where can we work on trying to cut some of these things down? Otherwise, I mean, all of it's got to be made up either in taxpayer rates or in fees to builders, which then translate into price of homes. So it's like, that's our option, right? There's so much that we can cut. We took on $2.5 million in debt service. We have to be able to make that up in somewhere. So that's, again, my concern again. So I appreciate the presentation you're doing, Mr. Rhodes. Again, you're not the problem. You didn't create it. You're pointing this out. I'm just saying, we need to take this budget seriously. We can't just be approving tons of money because it looks good in other funds. We need to be looking at this carefully, otherwise we're gonna leave the town in a really big mess in the next two years.
Thank you, Trusty Gator. Let's continue, Mr. Rhodes. Next slide, please, and we're we're very close, I think, two more, two more funds. So the Drainage Fund. Here's another another fund where there are some grants, I think we'll be able to fold in the Cleveland Avenue Outfall. There's a grant there for $230,000, for instance, related to the 2024 year. So again, some of these numbers will look a little better the next time I bring it back. I just my tendency to be conservative with grants, I I perhaps didn't ask enough questions about how far along are we in getting these grants awarded, so we'll we'll make sure to factor factor those in. We do end up with a little over $1 million in fund balance there. The reserve requirement, it would be $121,000, so we're good shape as far as that goes. Revenue's coming in, expenditures. Yeah, I didn't have much more to say about this this fund, so if there's any questions on this fund, happy to answer them. Otherwise, we have one one fund left. Questions? Questions? Trusty Gator?
I guess the only question is, with the drainage, it's very small in terms of expenditures, but our transfers are almost 40% of the expenditures of the Drainage Fund. Is there a reason that the transfers are so high for some, a fund that has, like, because in the other funds, I just felt like it's an outsized amount versus the other funds?
We we can look at that. With an administrative overhead calculation, what's, what what happens is, at a point in time, all of the positions in the General Fund are are looked at and allocated out to the different funds, split up as to, you know, what the relative percentages for each fund. Obviously, that's a, that's an estimate, you know, we don't collect time sheets or anything like that and can change over time. So it's the sort of thing you you want to look at an update periodically. So that number comes from the folks that were involved in in the various positions in the General Fund, allocated a certain percentage to the Drainage Fund. I I'm not familiar enough with drainage operations to be able to speak to why the the percentage there might be more than you would expect. I can ask that question. But that's, sometimes, even though a fund is small, smaller than the others, the the activity involved in in managing it and the administrative overhead involved can be, can still be significant, even if a fund is small. But I can certainly ask about that one.
I just need to do a shout out to our staff that's, with all the grants that are being applied to all these budgets and potential for 2024, just, we owe you so much for all of your efforts on those, and it looks like it's really saving us in a lot of cases. So thank you very much. Thanks.
Trusty Deets?
I do, and so I'm looking, and this might be something that we can come back and visit. I'm trying to figure out on page 76, our 2024 Capital Improvements Project, the list of grants. I do see, so the downtown bulbout crosswalks, that 1.8 million that came from this was from the grant that was secured for the beautifying Main Streets, Patty, correct? Yes. Got it. So this is kind of a pass-through cost for us on the remodel to Cleveland is my understanding on this.
Yes.
So really, truly, when I look at a lot of these grants, a lot of these grants are just pass-throughs to improvements, which is great. I see that it's helping areas of town. My question is, is how many of these actually benefit our what? No, it's okay. So actually, like, benefit the funds where it remains, and it just isn't a pass-through?
Well, you it is a pass-through. You can look at it that way. However, the expenditure portion of it is in the current capital improvement program. Most of these grants are benefiting either the streets, the drainage, in one case, the Sewer Fund with that lift station grant. There's an affordable housing grant in the in the General Fund that we haven't applied for yet, so that one we probably won't book. But the others are fairly are fairly far along. So the Sewer Fund, the Drainage Fund, and the Streets Funds in particular are benefiting from these from these grants. So it is a pass-through, but what you have in the CIP Fund is you have the expenditure side of it. And what I haven't added in yet is these revenues. We've got them listed here, but we haven't added it into the revenue component. See, in Drainage, yeah, we've got some of these grants, like there's a stormwater outfall grant that would directly impact some of the numbers in capital projects there in the Drainage Fund, that $458,000. Some of that would be covered by this grant, but I haven't factored in yet is the revenue side of it. So I I again, I'm showing you kind of a worst-case scenario here. But after talking with our our Public Works staffs and and our Deputy Town Administrator, I'm convinced that many of these have, since they've been awarded, they're they're good to be factored in. So I we'll see that in the next iteration. So yes, it is, it is a pass-through. I just haven't shown the dollar coming inside yet, and that'll, that'll help.
Got it. One other question. So on the transfers out to General Fund in the Drainage Fund Budget Overview, do we track where that transfer out is allocated to when it goes to the General Fund? Because I would assume that this this fund worked this many hours related to drainage. Do we track who's who's turning in saying, okay, I did five hours on drainage? Is there a way to track where this money is being, these additional monies are being?
So so we don't use a time sheet method like that. We we have a spreadsheet, essentially a big spreadsheet, that takes each of the positions in the General Fund and the ones that would apply towards the, like, a portion of the finance department, the salaries and the benefits. Right now, it's it's just salaries and benefits in a in a more, we're not even using the most robust form of overhead plan. Very often, you don't just look at salaries and benefits, but you look at all operating costs within the General Fund. So we're we're actually a little light here compared to most overhead plans that I've seen. But salaries and benefits, so of that $190,000, we know what positions that relates to. But we don't ask anybody to track their time sheet to say, well, you said you were gonna spend 5% in the Drainage Fund, but how does your time sheet look? We we don't do that. That would be, I don't know that we have the software for that, and it would it would be kind of quite an administrative burden. So that the way you get around that is that you periodically, you 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 true these up. You ask the same question again about how much is being applied to each fund. It it is not a it is not a perfect system, and it is not meant to be a to the hour or to the dollar thing, but it does need to be realistic as a way to allocate overhead. So it's tracked to the extent of, I know who's involved in that $190,000 as it comes into the General Fund, but not tracked to the extent of a time sheet.
Got it. So and I guess I apologize, because I should I should have worded that more correctly. So you can say that Public Works utilized $100,000 of the Drainage Fund, so that's why we're moving over the additional transfer out of the Drainage Fund for it. So what I'm just trying to figure out is, is who gets the additional allocations? Is it just is it guessing on what was utilized of that money?
So the the it goes to the General Fund. The General Fund receives that $1,889,000 we we talked about at the at the beginning. And so I know what that, where that's coming from and 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 how that was calculated. But it is just a resource into the General Fund to pay for those portion of the salaries of the those folks in the General Fund that are providing services to those enterprise funds.
Got it. Awesome. Thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Okay, one one more, one more slide. Find it here. Park Fund. Okay, this this requires a little bit of discussion too, because nobody likes to see negative numbers. And let me start with, you have a revenue over expenditure number of $688,000 proposed in 2024. We do, we have, we do end with $1,458 in ending balance, and the reserve requirement is $472,000. So we're good to go there. And even the debt service coverage is, we're good to go there. There is a small amount of debt service in this fund. So this negative didn't cause me quite as much heartburn as maybe the negatives in some of the other funds that we've talked about did. Because just to kind of give you a general context of maybe what other agencies or how they handle park, Parks and Rec type operations. It it was, it's curious to see Parks and Rec in its own fund, because when you have it in its own fund, it it looks like you expect it to break even or make money or something, as if it was an enterprise fund. But I I think we could probably all agree that we don't, we don't expect to generate enough revenue from Parks and Recreation fees to pay for all of the Parks and Recreation services. That would be very unusual. I've never seen that in my career. It's much like the library program, which which is in the General Fund, and appropriately so. It has some fees, but it's primarily a tax-based service. It's for the benefit of the residents of the Town of Wellington, provided by the taxes that are paid. Parks and Rec falls under that category too in in most agencies. Even though they do earn some fees, they're not enough, and they're not meant to be enough to cover to cover the cost, because to cover costs, you'd have to cover your your overhead and your debt service and your capital projects. And normally, recreation fees are set usually not even to cover the direct cost of the program, let alone any capital costs if you need to add a, you know, a big mower for a park, like I think is in the capital budget this year, or if you need to add other projects, let alone debt service or overhead. You know, those three categories, debt service, overhead, and capital projects adds up to almost $800,000. I mean, without that, the direct revenue and the direct expenditures of of the fund would come out, you know, slightly positive. But again, that's, to me, this is just me speaking, that's not the goal of the Parks and Recreation Department. It's a, it's a it's a program for the benefit of the residents. So I was surprised to see it in its own fund. You normally would see that program. Perhaps you would see the the impact fees related to parks, and there are a couple of them. Maybe that's in in its own fund, because that has a unique special purpose, like we've talked about for the other impact fees. But the core program of Parks and Recreation, maintaining our parks and putting on recreation programs for our residents, is it's unusual to see that in a separate fund. And so it's when I, when I see that negative amount there, of course, we don't want it to be negative. It would be great if if parks could pay for itself. Now, the way it does as well it is is, is because there's a lot of tax revenue that is that's allocated in into this fund. A portion of the sales tax, for instance, and a portion of other taxes as well. But of course, that just makes me think, well, if you're just gonna allocate a portion of the taxes, why not just have it in the General Fund? So I'm not proposing that at this point. That's a, that's a fairly big budgeting and accounting change, and, you know, again, I've only been here two months, so there there's a there's a number of things I'd kind of like to give more thought to before making any major changes. But I just wanted to give you a sense for, when we look at this, we're not looking at an enterprise fund. We're looking, not looking at a at a fund that we would normally expect to be able to set the fees to to cover the services. In fact, my my understanding is that our our fees are actually pretty reasonable, are pretty modest compared to some of our neighboring neighboring towns. So and that's, that's not a bad thing. That's a board decision about, you know, wanting to provide a valuable service to the residents and keep it mostly tax-based. But it it does create challenges in this fund. The good news is that we do have good fund balance here still. But I I I point, I point that out just because we've been talking about a lot of negative numbers and and just because we've been talking about a lot of negative numbers and and in some of the other funds that we've talked about. It is, it is a a big concern. It is something that we have to grapple with. In this fund, I'm not as concerned. A three hundred thousand dollar capital project year is a fairly big year for this fund. That would be unusual. And you know, without that, the the number would have been a lot, a lot less, the negative amount would have been a lot less. So those are my my comments on that and I'm happy to answer any questions about the park fund as well.
Trusty Gator.
Yeah, so this, I I don't have, I mean, I get CIP, that's part of it. I don't have an issue with that. My concern comes down to just, and I understand we're not expecting parks to pay for itself. I get that it won't do that. Is just again, looking at, okay, how much are we seeing revenue increase? Or expecting revenues to increase versus how much are we expecting to see, how much are we increasing expenditures? So for example, we're expecting a two percent increase in revenues, but we're planning a four percent increase in expenditures. But then when again, because we have the transfers now, because those have to be counted as expenditures, because that's what they are. That increase is actually eighteen percent. So the challenge is, is what happens is we're now getting farther and farther away. I get we're not expecting it to replace itself. But I want to make sure if we're going at a rate of a two percent increase in revenues and an eighteen percent increase in the related cost to a program, it's going to get really far out of whack really fast. We're going to start running out of fund balance. So I would like to see us try to keep those more in line, even understanding it doesn't necessarily need to be perfectly matched. But we need to not be, I mean, a nine times differences. Again, it does not the huge number and it's not a problem now, but we do three or four years of a, or two years of a negative six hundred thousand. And again, I want us to be expending stuff on cap. I don't have a problem with spending capital projects. That's what I'd like to see is fixing parks, putting in things. But it's when we're looking at just the expenditures, those aren't capital projects, those aren't us improving the parks. Those are just us running things. That's not buying the new mower to make us more efficient. That's just our operations of doing things. And I want to make sure we're not letting that portion get too far outside where our revenues are. So that's my only concern on that.
Thank you. Trusty Daly.
I'm not sure just how to find this because I'm not very good at this, but the the additional one percent sales tax that in the last election, we determined by voters could also be applied to parks and rec. Is that? Do we see that as revenue in either streets or parks? And then how are we allocating that in this budget?
Yes, in in both streets and parks. And I I believe the split was, I I I'd have to do the math. I think it's forty five, forty five percent, fifty five percent. I'd have to double check on that.
Okay.
Double check on that.
Yeah, thank you very much.
It is split between those two.
Thanks.
Yeah, I would be very curious to hear more information about this particular fund being absorbed into the general fund. Because the direct impact to the community from investing in our park and recreation services is to our sales tax revenue. If we host a softball tournament, like we're not making money on those fees. We invested in the parks and the facilities and the rate of return on that is people spending money in the restaurants, the gas stations, buying Band-Aids, all of that. So I don't know, maybe it's directly related to Conservation Trust Fund expenditures and revenues. But I think it would be a good idea to see this absorbed into the general fund. I'd be curious to know more. That's my only thought.
Thank you. Trusty Pete.
Kind of going off of what Mayor Protem McDonald said is I agree that the the cost benefit of hosting events here in our community. You go out to a park and you run over and grab an ice cream cone from Pete's Palace. You host a softball tournament and if the town is not providing said Band-Aids, you go and get your own Band-Aids. The the cost benefit for the Parks and Rec in general, it's one of those things that it does help balance itself out. I will say that it still will create a large deficit if we keep going in that negative amount. So and when you're looking at pulling more and more and more from fund balance, it's a lot of money to be pulling from fund balance and I appreciate that Trusty Gator is looking at two years ahead and four years ahead. Cause I know this was one of the items that we talked about is we weren't going to be reactive. We were going to be proactive as far as our board goes and not doing now and making sure we were doing five years, ten years from now. This keeps going like this, you're going to look at a major deficit in two years. So I think that's something we also need to look at and classify. I know that the one percent sales tax is coming in and I do, I do agree. I think it's the forty five or fifty five percent. When we're talking about adding extras and building parks and new subdivisions and that we pay for those subdivisions, the new parks cost money. That forty five to fifty five percent goes very fast at the end of the day, especially if developers aren't building the parks. If we are doing that and we are maintaining them, it gets expensive. So I think that's probably one of the best ways to look at this is I think that it could go spiral very quick. We can host events and stuff like that to make up the fun, but it's millions compared to a hundred, two hundred K that people are going to spend around town. So.
Thank you.
A quick comment on that because my, a question that I have too is in the future, I think we need to address park impact fees or the portion associated with parks. Because if this is what we're seeing, then that's not necessarily paying its own way from the impact perspective for infrastructure. So I think that's something that we need to bring back for potential revenue improvements in twenty twenty four. So I just want to be right.
Okay, I think we already did the next slide. So thank, you know, thank you for your time. It was, it was not, not all really lightweight news this evening, but I I I'll I'll tell you where things are good and when they're good. And when, when things are a challenge, I'll I'll tell you that as well and try to break it out as as cleanly as we can. So at least we we know what needs to be tackled. We we have, we we've taken the input, made notes about the input this evening. We've got a another budget work session in two weeks from tonight. And the Boonanza next week, looking forward to that. So we'll we'll fold in, we'll answer these, the the questions and then fold in the grant revenues and have a little bit different picture for the for the twenty fourth to look at and can discuss these things more.
Mr. Rose, I do have just one last question for you. As far as revenues from impact fees for building permits for new homes, for example, in the the, I assume that the twenty twenty three estimated impact fee revenue is to the amount of building permits that we've I think the larger point that I'm trying to get across is it it does not look like we're going to get there with building permits either this year, right?
Right.
So just something else to keep in mind.
Yes, the revenue, the 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 revenues that are impacted by building permit numbers, you know, working with Mr. Bird, we have looked at those numbers closely and tried to factor in our best estimates. They're based on information we have for this year and predicted for next year.
Thank you for putting together this presentation.
Okay.
Uh, time.
Public comment.
Yeah. Now it's time for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak, please. Approach the podium, you'll be given three minutes and state your name for the public record.
Hi, Dawn Peacock. Okay, so I just wanted to comment on this. First of all, I think a lot of the things that we're looking at today with all the changes that have been made with the way that we're doing transfers and things like that aren't exactly apples to apples. And so I think it will help if we could create kind of that, you know, that cross reference table so that we could look at the old way, look at the new way, so we can see what the actual changes are. I also want to say that, you know, with this presentation, thank you for pointing out that this is not, these aren't final numbers that you have grants and things to be applied. So fortunately, no decisions have to be made tonight. I wanted to note that there were amazing differences year over year in the presentation last year and this year. And I just am really grateful for all of the effort that's been put into the presentation as a resident that pays attention to things like that. Holy cow. I mean, night and day. And so, and you can tell that there was just so much intent put into that presentation to make things clear for the people that were consuming it. And I mean, really, if you can't explain the numbers, then you really don't know what's going on. And this year, I mean, numbers were explained beautifully, both in writing and of course in the in the presentation. So just really grateful for all that and all the hard work that was been put into it. And then, of course, we're all aware of Proposition HH and the potential impact that that can have on the budget. So I'm sure you don't know them.
Quick question.
Thank you.
For Mr. Rhodes. You were going, said you were going to talk about the HH, how that would affect a little bit tonight, maybe?
Yes, should it pass, it would, our best estimate right now is a hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars. So the general fund currently has a three hundred and ninety nine thousand dollar ending revenue over expenditure net income number. So it would impact that. It would drop that number down by a hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars based on the worksheet we got from the county assessor's office. Yes.
Public comment, going once, going twice. So, okay. At this point, I would like to take a board recess of five minutes. Meeting is back in session, time being eight fifty nine P M. Mr. Clerk, may I roll call, please?
Trusty Gator. Here. Trusty Mason.
Here.
Trusty Daly.
Present.
Trusty Wigan.
Here.
Trusty Teets.
Here.
Mayor Protem McDonald.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, first item will be the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, will you please read these items?
Certainly, Mayor Shosse. Before I do that, though, I just wanted to point out that staff did not edit something that needed to be fixed in the minutes on the I believe it's the third page of it. There's a section that's highlighted, basically indicating the motion that the board made following the executive session from the last regular meeting. The intent for that was to have the name corrected and uploaded. With the board's approval at this point, we would recommend proceeding with keeping this item on the consent agenda and editing that name to be corrected. Mr. Sapiens, I think has further comment.
The correct name is Nicholas Poppy with the firm of Nathan Dunne and Meyer. So. Thank you. Just minor typo on there that just hadn't been correct by the time it's gone to packet.
How does the board feel? Perfect move that we accept the consent agenda with the proposed edit to the September twenty six, twenty twenty three regular meeting minutes to read firm of Nathan Dunn and Meyer.
Second.
May I roll call, please?
Trusty Gator. Yes, Trusty Teets.
Yes.
Trusty Mason.
Yes.
Trusty Wigan.
Yes.
Trusty Daly.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously and the consent agenda is approved with the stated amendment.
Thank you. All right, on to action items. Mr. Clerk, will you please read the title of F one and present this item?
Certainly, Mayor Shosse. Item F one, resolution number thirty nine dash twenty twenty three, resolution of the town of Wellington, Colorado regarding the conduct of a regular election. Okay, good evening, Mayor Shosse, trustees. Ethan Moose, Town Clerk, it's my pleasure to present this item to you this evening. Following the discussion that we had at the meeting in September, I've I've returned with this resolution tonight to seek further guidance from the board regarding the conduct of the illusion or of of the upcoming regular election in April of next year. The resolution before you tonight offers the option for either the, either a mail or polling place election, depending on the board's guidance. The presentation that I gave you at the previous meeting is also included for your reference. I'm happy to take any questions that you may have and seek further guidance. If the board would like to further provide sort of decision criteria regarding specific items that they intend to prioritize with the conduct of this election, I'm happy to sort of take those items and return at a later point with additional analysis regarding that decision. Thank you. Trusty Gator.
Sure. So I, one of the things that I've been looking into with this, so there's multiple ways to do this. And we talked a lot about the in person versus polling place election. Couple of things that I did want to highlight is I know we talked about kind of precedents that had been set. So I think the town's been around since nineteen oh eight. And we've done three polling or three mail in elections. So the precedence is definitely that we have done polling place elections for the majority of the history of the town. That doesn't mean that that has to be the way it continues. But one of the things that I wanted to bring up that I think we should consider is so in California, back when I used to live there, it's hard to believe. But one of the things that they did with their polling place elections is they would actually mail out to every voter a guide. So you still had to come vote in person, but you would get in the mail, a guide that would have all of the items that were on the agenda. Now, it was like a booklet because they'd have all the agenda items, supporting, opposing. They'd also have candidate pages and everything. So as a voter, you weren't getting a ballot in the mail, but you're actually getting a guide that actually helped walk you through the election, understanding what it is that you were voting on. So one of the things that I did some number crunching to figure out is what if we were to do something that was similar to that? Because anyone can request an absentee ballot. There's nothing to keep anyone from doing that. But if we were to send something where we took, like we typically get a hundred pages that they can't, or a hundred words, sorry, not pages. The candidates are able to submit to, that goes on a town website and it's their bio. But if you basically took those bios and just put them in the order that they were chosen, because there there's an order that they choose from, how your name's going to appear on the ballot. You just put them on the same thing, put them front and back on two or three sheets of paper, however many it takes. And then we can actually include the form that people need to fill out if they want to request a absentee ballot. And we can mail something out to every voter. And the nice thing with that is because we're not mailing ballots, you can just mail it like you would mail a utility bill. We're literally just mailing information that doesn't have anyone's private or information, anything like that. And from a cost standpoint, number one, that would actually reduce our costs significantly. Let me pull up just my estimations. So these are based off of the data that Ms. Garcia forwarded to the whole board of just the election expenses. So pulling out the ones that were related to the mailing, it came out to roughly a dollar and fifty three cents when you divided the total list, ten thousand eight hundred ninety nine dollars and sixty cents. Which comes out to basically a dollar and fifty three cents when you look at that across the seven thousand one hundred and seven voters. So I looked up in the research I did, I'm sure we could actually get the cost lower, but it came out to roughly eighty cents to mail out where we hire a company to the printing, the mailing and everything. So Mr. Moose doesn't have to sit there and do envelopes or anything like that. Literally just send them the list. Here's what I want. They'll print it. They'll mail it, postage, everything, roughly eighty cents per mailing. So you send that to the entirety, and this is just looking back at twenty twenty two, which was seven thousand one hundred and seven electors. So if you mail that, it's five thousand six hundred and eighty five dollars and sixty cents. And then if you then took every single person, let's say the two thousand and eighty one people that voted in our last mail in election all said, yes, we want to receive a ballot. If you then turned around and mailed them at the same cost of the dollar and fifty three cents, that would come out to three thousand one hundred and ninety one dollars and fifty one cents. And that brings the total to eight thousand eight hundred and seventy one dollars and eleven cents. And what that does, it actually puts more information in the hands of every single voter. And for those voters who do want to vote by mail, they literally have the form. All they have to do is fill it out and they can drop it off at the, at the town hall. Literally can put it in a drop box. That's all it has to do. And then you get mailed a ballot. And it still comes in under the cost that we paid for mailing ballots to every single voter, whether they voted or not. So, and again, that's assuming a price of eighty cents to mail it to everyone. And so that was one of the ideas I had is a hybrid. So where we are giving more information out to people, we're letting them know we're potentially doing things different. And then still giving them the option and making it as easy as possible to say, hey, you can still receive a ballot in the mail if you want to. We're going to make it literally as simple as we can. The other thing, regardless of whether we choose to do a mail in or a polling place election, what I would recommend is we stick a ballot question on the election in twenty four and ask the voters, what do they want? Do you want us to continue doing mail in elections? We changed it in twenty twenty. We didn't change it because the voters want. We changed it because of a worldwide pandemic. And then we just kind of stuck with that. But put it out there and ask the voters. And the voters say, yes, we absolutely do want to continue having a mail in election. Great. Then now we know, we've asked them for their opinion. It doesn't cost us more money to do that because we're running it on our own municipal election. And we're already going to have the balance and everything there. So regardless of whether we do mail in or And we're already going to have the balance and everything there. So regardless of whether we do mail-in or polling place, I would suggest that we actually just put the question to the voters and see what they think. Um, but I would like to look at the possibility of doing this hybrid type option. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Um, when you were, when in California, um, and they sent out that packet, how were they, how were they voting there? Was that mail-in or in?
Polling.
Polling.
Polling place.
And then was that, was that municipality, was it for municipality?
Um, that was for the larger coordinated elections.
Okay, so for like the general.
That was like the general elections. For the polling place, for the municipalities, you had to go in person. They didn't send you anything.
Okay.
You got nothing from municipalities. That was for the larger ones.
Okay.
Basically, I'm looking at this as an option because I know the big concern was we want to make sure voters have information, have the, make it easy for them to vote. To me, there's those two things. One, we're not expending money on sending ballot, because ballots are more expensive to mail than just regular paper, because they're thicker, there's secrecy stuff that needs to be involved. But we spent seven thousand seven hundred and eight dollars mailing ballots to people that no, didn't vote. So, and then it gives, again, this gives everyone the option to, if they want to, they can still get that ballot in the mail.
How, uh, how soon were they sending that out before the election?
If I remember correctly, it was like three weeks, four weeks prior to the election that that got sent out. So I, I'd have to, it's, this was back in like two thousand eight, two thousand nine. So I don't remember the exact details, but I want to say it was a month, a month and a half before the election, somewhere in that timeframe, that we got the packets. Now, we might have to adjust that timeline just based on the fact, if we are going to do a mailing for ballots, those obviously need to be mailed earlier to people. So we might do it two months before the election. But the thing is, is we would know every, I mean, we're going to have all of the candidates by the end of January. I mean, the only thing that would change is if we decide that we as a board want to put something else on the election. But we just need to make sure that if we're going to put additional items on there, have that ready by a certain time. But mail that information out, I would say probably in February. So that way people have time to submit the form, get that collected, and then we can still mail out ballots.
Thank you. Trustee Daly?
Okay, I want to just acknowledge that real quick. Um, what, uh, trustee Gator mentioned, and then, uh, I'll do my ploy, of course, for mail-in ballots. But um, I received my guide for state, the state items a couple of weeks ago already for, for that election, which I believe that's in November. So, um, I think we've missed that window. Also, if the concern was saving money, mailing two things to each resident is going to cost more in, in that sense and developing that and, and all those kind of items. So I'm concerned about um, mailing a guide, mailing a postcard, mailing then also a, uh, ballot. So I, I am concerned about those. Um, there are some really great uh, guides to candidates that are already distributed from multiple areas. So like the Colorado one does a really good review. Um, I believe, I don't know if North Forty did it last year, League of Women Voters, uh, Colorado Fifty Fifty. Uh, but there's many organizations that reach out to candidates to ask for bios and ask specific questions to be highlighted in in materials that are made for and intended to be distributed. So I think that's covered, I think. Um, my concern is if the town of Wellington is distributing campaign materials. Um, I, I don't think that was the intent, but I always worry that if a candidate looks better, I have better light for a guide kind of purpose. It would look like the town of Wellington is leaning towards a candidate or pushing a candidate. I think that's, that's some not the waters I would want to be in personally.
Dan, can you speak to that?
I, I mean, I, I, that always kind of stands in the back of my head as I hear anything about candidates and elections. But I mean, it is material that's already put on the website. I mean, the, 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 the town, the town collects bios and, and presents that to provide information on candidates. So that's, I, I wouldn't really be concerned with that. And I, I think certainly if anything were being mailed out by the town regarding the election, um, I would ask that I be copied before that went out anyway. So, um, that, that particular thing always on my mind and certainly would be if we're ma- mailing anything out.
Yeah, the, the seeking information, I feel like it's different than delivering that to your mailbox personally. And I'm not saying that that is unethical, but it, there's, there is a in the back of my head, there's a little itch there and that makes me nervous. So, um, that's one of my concerns about that. Um, more people vote when there's a mail-in ballot. Uh, we've seen it either between three three times as many in twen- uh, two, two elections ago, uh, almost five times as many in the last election. That is more of our residents telling us and participating in our government process, right? So if we were to do a polling place, we would know that less people would participate. This is not just a fact from our elections. This is, this is how it works. So if we were to choose a decision that represented less residents, are we doing our job in representing residents? Um, we need to get as many people to participate as possible, and that happens through mail-in ballots. Um, there's more options. It's, uh, more, in my mind, it's more accessible. There's more, uh, flexibility in your ability to vote. You're on your own schedule. Um, you have access to mail. Uh, it makes it easier. Of course, absenteeism ballots also come through mail, but it requires like two steps prior to that to ask for that. Um, so things that aren't convenient won't happen. That's just, that's not consistently. People are really excited for elections like I am. I love elections and I was, you know, election judge when I, the first year I possibly could, and I love elections. Those people are going to seek anything that they need to, to make sure their vote counts. But for the people who are busy and have young kids and who are parents, they're going to need the most convenient option possible. So the point is mail-in ballots have more people participate, and I want as many people to participate as possible. So mail-in ballots is how, is, is how that works.
Thank you. Trustee Mason?
Um, I do support the idea of mail-in ballots, especially just, uh, in regards to what trustee Daly said. I mean, going from nine point oh four percent in twenty eighteen up to twenty nine point two eight percent of, uh, active registered voters in twenty twenty two. That's, that's a pretty impressive jump. Um, and certainly I don't want to disenfranchise uh, any of our voters here in Wellington. Um, I would propose that if we are looking at simply saving costs on mail-in ballots, I think it's worth considering uh, potentially, uh, even sending back a ballot item to uh, see if residents would be interested in moving our elections to November. I suspect that if we had our, uh, electors on the November ballot in coordination with the county, that we would save pretty significant cost there. So uh, that would be something I would throw out. I don't know if Ms. Garcia could speak to any of that as far as what other municipalities have done by chance.
I do know this is something that is, has happened across the state, um, over the last several years. I don't have any data to support that, but if that is something the Board of Trustees is interested in, we can certainly look into that. Mr. Moose can report back.
Thank you. Is that all you got?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
I love trustee Gator's idea. It gives more people an option. So instead of saying you're, you can vote by mail or you can vote in person. This is actually the least restrictive way to encourage voting. I vote in person. It's, it's kind of a thing for me. I don't want that removed from me to where I have to do a mail-in ballot. That seems extremely unfair. I know that we've received emails. There's also other people that want to be able to vote in person. So you cannot remove one thing from someone just to allocate for an additional others. You find a way, which is extremely creative, to make it work for everyone. I'm not against exploring this option that trustee Gator brought up. I took my daughter and her friend to vote this last year at River of Life. Very grateful that I had someone helping me chase them around. That was part of the church. Um, this option could very well set a precedent for boards that argue for in-person versus a mail-in ballot. It's the best of both worlds. You're not discluding anyone. You're simply making it an option. But at the same time, you're increasing transparency and education. Hey, there is elections coming up. Because some people, when I was campaigning, had absolutely no idea that they could vote for trustees here in town. And I knocked on almost every single door here in Wellington, and there was a very large percent that didn't even know there was an election going on. And there are people that don't get their mail. I completely support ADA access to voting, which is why there is absentee ballots. This goes one step further and gives them the option to say, no, I can attend in person. Or yes, please mail me a ballot. Honestly, this is, when you look at it, if we really wanted to argue cost, in twenty eighteen, the polling place per elector cost was a dollar and twenty eight cents. And twenty twenty and twenty twenty two, mail-in ballots were two dollars and eight cents in twenty twenty two. And twenty twenty, sorry, twenty twenty and twenty twenty two, the mail-in ballots cost two oh five. So if you wanted to ar- argue cost in-person polling place per elector cost was a dollar and twenty eight cents, it's cheaper to vote in person. The numbers are right there. I think all of us received the same numbers in the email. So at the end of the day, instead of removing something from someone, we've just added an additional option. I can't see how anyone could argue adding an additional option for our voters. We're respecting the people, the seniors. That is their thing. They go and vote and then they go to the T-bar for coffee. I know, because I go. And that's one of those things. Don't remove my ability to vote in person because you want a mail-in ballot. It just, this option makes it equal for anyone. So that's all I have.
Perfect. Thank you. Trustee Wigan?
After the, uh, fire election, I know we only had like four or five hundred people that voted. But I think there was not the option that, uh, trustee Gator is talking about here. If we did do it that way, I think we would need to make it extremely simple for people to get a mail-in or an absentee ballot. And I think we can probably come up with some type of a way of doing that. Uh, again, getting that out, getting the mailing out, you know, having the bios on the people, you know. We need to, I think, uh, uh, advertise it a lot better. And in the process of advertising it, as far as getting it out there with the, the mail-in ballot option too, I think that could work. And, you know, you're going to have the best of both worlds. Uh, you know, still, you're talking about, uh, even on our last election, what did we have? A little over two thousand people vote out of seven thousand? It still ain't good. I mean, we got a long ways to go. So I mean, we gotta be a way of of working it and getting it out into the community a lot better. And, uh, I think, you know, I've had it where I've had the mail-in ballot sent to me and I forgot about it. So again, the, I think we gotta hit both fronts on this. So I like that option, but I think we do, do need to make a good simple option for people to get an absentee, absentee ballot.
Thank you. Mayor Pretten?
Wow, so many thoughts and a lot to say. Uh, but I want to start with thanking Mr. Moose for his presentation. I thought you, I wasn't here when you guys received that from him, but I did watch it later and I thought that you did a fantastic job with that. Thank you so much for putting that information together. Um, I'm just going to keep it pretty short. I support mail ballots.
Thank you. Um, clarifying questions. For mail-in ballots, you can still go to town hall and request a ballot and vote there? Or do you need, you, you bring the ballot that was mailed to you to town hall to turn it in?
That's correct. You can also request an additional ballot. I believe there's a process, uh, where you affirm that I have misplaced or lost or have destroyed my ballot in the mail process, uh, and then you're issued an additional ballot.
Okay.
Does, does that answer your question?
Yes. Um, the other question I would have, if, if we were to do something where we were to mail it out and they could request an absentee ballot, would we then be charged the postage to mail those absentee ballots? Who gets charged that?
Um, yes, the, the town would, would cover the cost of.
So we'd be mailing twice?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of the mail-in ballots. Um, yeah, I mean, trustee Mason, you, you fought in the Marines, right? You were in rank corps. And what freedoms did you fight for?
Well, geez, I mean. Uh, well, I mean, you know, obviously freedom and liberty and being able to, uh, you know, uh, I, I think accessibility for these types of things, certainly, uh, you know, trustee Teet spoke a lot about ADA access. I'm, I'm not sure what could be more open and free than having a ballot delivered to your mailbox. You don't have to go anywhere. You get it, you vote, and you stick it back in the mailbox. I'm not sure what's easier than that. So, uh, you know, as far as accessibility and freedom and the ability to vote and these types of things, I think it's I think it's a no-brainer that if we want participation, you need to mail ballots, plain and simply.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I'm in favor of mail-in ballots. Um,
I wanted to mention one thing on the cost because that was brought up a couple of times.
Yes.
So yes, you're absolutely right. If you mail things twice, yes, if every one of seven thousand one hundred and seven people responded and said, yes, we want to vote, we want a mail-in ballot, yes, you would absolutely spend more money. Um, as trustee Wigan had stated, we only had two thousand and eighty one people actually vote. So I just basically took, because the two are not equal. You pay a dollar and fifty three cents to mail the ballot is more expensive than just mailing paper. So at eighty cents, you're looking at much less than the dollar fifty three. So you're only mailing to everyone at the eighty cent level. And then you're mailing to a dollar and fifty three, whoever asked for a mail-in ballot. So even if we looked at the last election, every single person who voted at two thousand and eighty one, most people, well, actually three thousand was the highest. But in a regular municipal election that was not the marijuana election, I think that's the highest vote we've had turnout outside of the marijuana vote. Even if every single one of those people requested a mail-in ballot, we're still two thousand dollars less expensive than having mailed a ballot to every single person. Again, because we spent seven thousand dollars, seven thousand seven hundred dollars mailing to people that did not vote. So that's where. So that's the full election cost. I just took, I broke out the shipping portion, the shipping and printing, because the other election pieces, it would be, I, I would call it unethical if I were to take the two dollar number, because that includes election judges and everything else, which you still have to pay for a polling place election. You still have to pay election judges and all that stuff. So I tried to just look at the mailing cost, if you were to do that for a mail-in ballot versus a mailing cost if we were to send something out. Um, to the whole thing on whether, I mean, you don't have to include bios in there.
Yeah.
My whole thought process is if the concern is we are not giving people information, we can actually give them better and more information. And for the concerns of us promoting a candidate, it would be nothing more than what we have on our website. We're already making that information available on the website. I, I don't, again, Mr. Sapiens, if there's another thing that we could pull it, but and the only thing that's going to do is if you pull those, it's going to make it less expensive, because now you're literally can mail one page that explains the election and how they can vote. And then you include the form that they need to fill out if they want a mail-in ballot. And then you're down to two pages instead of four.
Yeah.
So it just brings the cost down. So I just wanted to address that because those were brought up.
Yeah. Sure.
I, I, I would just, um, I, I still would like to see if the board supports at all, like I said, the notion of potentially moving or asking voters, uh, if it would be an option to move our elections to No- November. Again, I think, uh, as, especially from a mail-in ballot standpoint, if we do that in coordination with Mar- uh, Laramie County, I think our mail-in ballot cost would go down significantly. So if, if the board's interested in having a staff look at that as an option, I'd, I'd just be throwing that out to see what the interest is, if any.
Absolutely. And that would also increase participation too, because people are used to voting in November. So.
And get their booklet from, you know?
Yeah, that would, that would definitely increase it.
Consolidating, you know, services would definitely make it much more cost-effective and efficient.
Yeah.
And it would also create a lot more awareness and potential for participation, because people are going to be looking at those issues that are regional and not just necessarily local. So I think that's an excellent suggestion, trustee Mason.
The, um, Laramie County in Colorado are like amazing example of mail-in ballots. Um, other, we're far beyond other states and counties for sure. We have, um, we're a model of mail-in ballot. So I just, I just want to do that too, because people are accustomed in our area to receiving. So I just, I just wanna do that too, because people are accustomed in our area to receiving mail-in ballots a lot of the time. So that's also kind of the regular and the norm. Also, in 2003 elections ago, the one that was, or two elections ago, excuse me, that was the first mail-in ballot, those decisions were made prior to the epidemic, by the way. That was just amazing foresight from that board at the time. That decision was made similar to probably the timing that we're deciding it right now for the next vote that was in April. So there are many reasons why that occurred, and thank goodness they did, because people were able to vote in that election.
We did that specifically to encourage voter turnout. I was on the board at that time. And that was why, was because we had such a low turnout with polling place elections. And we had a ton of feedback from the community about accessibility to the elections. I mean, you never know what the weather's gonna be like in April. You know, it's tough for senior citizens to get out there on those slippery sidewalks. It's, that was what the citizens wanted, they requested it, and we saw a huge impact from that. Much more higher voter turnout than with the polling place.
Right. And then the opposite to a creative solution or a solution that exists already, if someone did insist on doing something in person, there's a drop box. Like you can take it in person and deliver it to a spot. And you can do that anytime during that window, not just seven to seven on voting day. So if in-person is what you want to do, you want to make sure it gets there and gets counted. You can drop it yourself into the box as you would at a polling place. So that, the opposite example is definitely possible for doing items in person as well with a mail-in ballot. Not to mention what Mr. Moose mentioned about replacement ballots.
In that case, I suppose staff would recommend that we sort of do some analysis on what it would look like to present a referred item to the public, potentially even in the upcoming regular election, to discuss the option of moving the election to November, if it is the board's wish to do that. And then in the future, sort of moving forward with the expectation that coordinated elections would be an option if the board chooses to engage in them for regular elections moving forward. I mean, we could run the numbers. I know when we did our coordinated election with Larimer County, our costs were higher than if we had run it ourselves. So if you're looking at it as a cost-saving measure, I highly, it is all dependent on how many people are participating in the election. Because if they've got 1,000 different things, the cost to each person goes down. If it's literally our thing and maybe one or two others, our costs are gonna be a lot higher. So just keep that in mind. It is, with mail-in elections, we can set what that's gonna be. If we do a coordinated election with Larimer County, we lose the ability to determine what that's gonna look like. So just something to keep in mind on that.
The nice thing about that is approaching that election date, we can either choose to do a coordinated election or our own election from a mail-in ballot perspective, depending on what might be cheaper. So instead of having the coordinated ballot, they would receive our ballot separate of that, which I think is a horrible idea, because you would get confused if you voted or not. But if the concern was the cost item, also, why, I mean, the amount of money that we're talking about, not to mention moving it to November, would definitely potentially help. But we're talking about the freedoms and voting rights and encouraging people to speak their minds in our town. And although there's gotta be a dollar amount on everything, that's not where the cuts need to be. This is not, this is not where we cut. We heard from a resident before, 4th of July is not where we make the cuts. Voting rights is not where we make the cuts.
Mr. Mayor, would you be willing to entertain a motion?
Well, I need, I need, I need to open this up to public comment. At this time, I'd like to open this up for public comment. Those wishing to speak, you'll have three minutes. Please state your name for the record.
Okay, first of all, please, nobody take any offense to what I'm gonna say. Because everyone's got their own valid opinions on this. But I am livid that someone is discussing, say, and again, no offense, saving a dollar for my vote. So I think it was like a dollar or something, and then $2 or something. My vote is worth more than two frickin' dollars. And I understand what you guys are saying. This should not be about money. This should absolutely not be about money. When you're talking about the absentee ballot, yes, you can get an absentee ballot. But you know what? There's a deadline for absentee ballots. There's a deadline for setting them out. Plans change. So now, all of a sudden, if I, if I didn't request an absentee ballot, because I thought I was gonna be able to to go and do it on that day, and I get in a car wreck, or my son gets in a car wreck, and I'm at the hospital, I'm wherever, I've gotta leave town for whatever, I can't vote now. Because I don't have a mail-in ballot. Because I was told I had to get an absentee one, and I had to do it by a certain date. Well, you know what? Plans frickin' change. And I do not appreciate, I'm not saying that you can't vote in person. I don't understand why, oh, I understand money, why we can't have both a polling place and the mail-in ballots. To put a price tag on this and to tell me that I don't have that flexibility because of a dollar and something cents, just, I can't even fathom that right now. And the best of both worlds is to do both. Have the polling place open and have the mailing, mail-in ballots. And if we need to raise money somehow, if I need to get out there and do a frickin' lemonade stand, I'll do it. Because this is, this is a hill I'll die on. I'm sorry, guys, this just makes me livid.
Thank you.
Christine Gator, you have in the budget two elections slated for 2024. Why don't you just make it a polling place and a mail-in and one election? Then you already have it slated in the budget. I don't understand why you have two elections slated. Maybe you guys can explain that to us, what you have planned, that we need two elections for 2024. But we have it in the budget already slated. Just add the two together, polling place and mail-in.
Thank you. Bringing back to the board. Final discussion. Actually, we'll do a motion and then we'll have more comments.
Hey, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 39, 2023, a resolution of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, regarding the conduct of a regular election by mail ballot and for staff to look at the possibility of changing the election date from April to November.
Second.
Further discussion?
I do want to mention the reason why, or I think what would be fiscally responsible for multiple elections potentially in the budget, is because occasionally citizens bring initiatives. And if that were the case, and the voting on that has to occur in a certain timeline following that, the approval of those. So in that case, we would be required to have an additional election in order to acknowledge those citizen initiatives.
Thank you.
No, I do, yes, I am extremely grateful for the comments this evening and I'm, I guess I will look, I'm hoping to do a different motion than that. I would love to support the generalized idea that we have both the in-person and the mail-in. If you don't want to mail stuff out beforehand, fine, don't. But you still have to say that public comment is absolutely accurate. And why not provide the most options available? Honestly, at the end of the day, this is a vote, and your vote is worth more than a dollar and 58 cents. So my two cents.
Thank you. Mr. Gator?
So I take great offense at the accusations from members of this board that I am attempting to take away people's rights to vote. We are all entitled to our opinions. You can disagree with me on the best way to do an election, that is fine. To imply that I am attempting to take away the rights that trustee Mason fought for for people is offensive. Okay, we, since the beginning of this town in 1908, did not have any polling place elections, or sorry, mail-in elections until 2020. So somehow up till that point, people had the right to vote. Their rights were not being taken away, reduced, falsified, any of that. So I take great offense to the accusations that have been put, that I am trying to take away people's rights to vote. Everyone has the right. I'm saying there's a different option of how we proceed that I think allows people to have the information. It allows us to do things in a way that I think would be better. It's fine to disagree with me, that's absolutely fine. But the accusations that have been made are ridiculous.
Thank you. I don't recall making any accusations myself. I was just stating facts. So sometimes facts hurt. All right, let's make two vote. Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please? Mayor Porton McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Daley?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
No.
Trustee Gator?
No.
Trustee Teetz?
No.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
With a vote of four in favor, three against, the motion carries and resolution number 39, 2023 passes with the stipulation that the regular election in 2024 will be conducted as a mail ballot election. And I'm also happy to carry forward that discussion regarding changing the election cycle to November, what that would entail, analysis, presenting that to the board, et cetera. Thank you. And then now we'll have you presenting on the next item, right? No, you'll just read the title.
Item F2, resolution number, excuse me, resolution number 41, 2023, a resolution amending the 2022 budget.
Thank you. Ms. Megan? Please present the items.
Good evening, Mayor and Trustees. Megan Smith, Deputy Director of Public Works. Before you this evening, you have two related resolutions back-to-back. Mr. Rhodes, during his presentation, did speak, touch on this topic just a bit. So the first resolution, 41, 2023, is related to amending the 2022 budget to increase the line item for what is titled in that budget as raw water purchases to a value that would allow all expenditures received in 2022 to be paid from that line item. There's a bunch of numbers, so I'm gonna read numbers as opposed to trying to remember them. But they're all in the packet that you have in front of you. As a reminder, that 2022 line item budget was 2.058 million dollars. You received in your packet there the list of the six invoices, expenditures for that line item for 2022, including the full amount of the North Pooter invoice that we received, over 2.67 million dollars. The, that particular line item, I guess underestimate from, from budget standpoint in 2021, when predicting the 2022 budget, was not taking into account the extreme swing that the nation saw in interest rates moving from, you know, about 2.5% to excess of 8%. That was the largest singular impact as to the increase in that, that one invoice over what was anticipated in 2022. Staff came to the board in July with a proposed amendment. That, that resolution did fail. We came back at the following meeting in late July to approve partial payment according to our purchasing policy for making payment up to the remaining amount in the budget. We did make that payment. And we're here tonight to amend, to ask to amend the budget in order to make the remaining payment to North Pooter. Do you have any questions based on the amendment memo?
Thank you. Trustee Gator?
Yeah, so the biggest question that I've got is, I know when we were initially presented this, we had talked about savings from the CIP, and we were told that number was gonna be somewhere around hopefully half a million dollars. So what changed between July and now that it's only 300,000? And then the second portion is what impacts, is this? We'll start with that one, because the other ones are separate.
Okay. I believe initial conversations in passing were perhaps premature, but it also included about $100,000 in budgets, line items that had been deferred for other reasons. So there were three items from the 2022 budget that had been brought forward and deferred through part of the amendment that Ms. Runkel brought. And so when removing those, that decreased this dollar amount as well. And then as we get further to closing out budget year 2022, making sure all the numbers matching up, so that did decrease.
Okay. And then with the CIP funds, I know you mentioned that those are gonna roll back into the water fund. Have those funds been removed from the water fund into a separate fund for CIP? Or they're just sitting in the water fund, but they're slated for CIP?
My understanding, and I'll have Mr. Rhodes come up if I misspeak, is that those funds don't, so the capital fund is not really a fund, right? So it's not, doesn't have a revenue of its own. The only revenue that it has is when money moves over into the fund in order to pay for a project. So in this case, less money would be needed to be moved to the capital fund at the end of 2022 in order to pay for those projects that were completed. Either way you think about it, it would be the same thing. The money moves over. If the project came in under budget, that money would fall back, if it came from the water fund, back to the water fund. If it came from the sewer fund, back to the sewer fund, street fund, so on. Same holds true for parks, general fund, all of that.
Okay. And then the budget that we're looking at today, does that take into account the difference of that $600,000 from the water fund balance?
It does. That was one of the topics that Mr. Rhodes made sure to touch on.
Okay.
So the numbers that you saw during that presentation did have this, six, remaining $640,000 embedded in the numbers. So it was already applied in the final numbers or the beginning balances that you saw for 2023.
Okay.
And then trickling through, through 2024.
Okay. The only concern that I really have on this is that we have the money in fund balance, but as we deplete fund balance, we have to replenish that, which leads to rates. So thank you for explaining the difference on the CIP projects.
Thank you. Trustee Teetz?
I have nothing.
Trustee Daley?
No questions, thanks.
No, no questions, Ms. Smith. I do appreciate that you guys accounted for the $2.7 million in the 2024 budget for this line item. So thank you for that. That way, hopefully, we avoid this situation in the future, so.
Mayor Porton? Thank you. Are there any comments from the public on this item? No. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I'd like to make a motion. Resolution number 41-2023, a resolution amending the 2022 budget.
Second. Any final comments?
None.
No. Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please? Mayor Porton McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Daley?
Yes.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously and resolution 41-2023 is approved.
Moving on to part two. Resolution 42, 2023 is similar to what you saw at the end of July. This is a resolution approving that additional payment to complete payment in full for the North Pooter invoice. The additional payment is in the amount of $640,000, $640,650.18. Do you have any questions?
Questions? No questions. Any comments from the public on this item? No. May I get a motion?
You want to agree? I'll take it.
Yeah, Dave, do it.
I make a motion to approve resolution number 42-2023. The resolution for the Town of Wellington, Colorado, making payment to the Northern Pooter Irrigation Company.
I'll second.
Any final comments? No.
Ooh, wait, yes.
Oh.
Ms. Megan, thank you so much for all of your hard work with North Pooter. Because really, negotiating that contract and all of the efforts that you've put into this is what is gonna end up saving the town money in the long run. Thank you so much for all of your hard work and for getting things done that people haven't been able to get done for 10-plus years. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Don't change that yet.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please? Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor Porton McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Teetz?
Yes.
Trustee Daley?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse? Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously and resolution number forty-two dash twenty-two-three is approved.
Thank you. On to reports. Mr. Seppi and, uh, door reported this time. Thank you. Ms. Garcia?
Very quickly, I, thank you so much for your comments during the budget discussion. I know this was difficult and it was long. Um, and this document, as we talked about, is a very draft document. So we frantically, there were three of us taking notes on one shared document throughout the discussion. So hopefully we captured all those comments and questions and concerns. We'll work over the next couple of weeks to bring back another document for you that you're more comfortable with. Um, and it will be more refined. We'll have, um, more up-to-date year, end-of-year expenses for twenty-two-three, updated revenues, things like that. So, um, I wanted to thank you very much for your candid comments and, and helping us, helping, helping us prepare a document that you can support and, um, can be assured that we are looking out for the best for the town. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Uh, staff reports are in the packet. Are there any questions on those items?
No.
Uh, one item that I was hoping to discuss is regarding the solid waste. That's in the staff report section, is it not?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I don't wanna skip over that, because I do need feedback. Um, the, the memo included in the packet is wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Byrd. So that provides all the background information you need. They're proposing, um, an IGA, intergovernmental agreement. Um, that's an amendment, which pretty much puts everything kind of on hold until they figure out what we should be doing in the IGA. Um, my, I, I'm just trying to, you guys probably all read and just, and went over this. Do you guys have any questions? It's, it's kind of the same talk track that we've been discussing before, where we're missing milestones and dates, including the original IGA. A lot of those aren't even pertinent anymore. Construction costs are out of control and there's no, there's not money to do the projects even tier one as requested. So a significant process needs to happen to see what we can do and how. And they want to reference our technical committee, which includes Mr. Byrd and representatives from all the related municipalities to really be able to dig in and provide those recommendations. So, uh, I have a couple other thoughts on it, but if anybody else has any comments that I can take to the meeting next week, I would appreciate it.
I just had one bullet on that, the amendment, that I was hoping you might be able to provide clarification on. And if you wanna do so, you know, at a later time, I'm okay with that, too.
Okay.
It is about the, uh, the flow projections.
Uh-huh.
And that being excluded. I think that that is important and relevant to our, our concerns about the impacts with the traffic and trash. And so if that's being taken out of the equation for discussion,
Mm-hmm.
that isn't supporting one of our primary reasons for being at the table. I mean, are you thoughts on that?
Um, I agree. That's a major concern regarding traffic in general. Those kind of items have been our top priority this whole time. The flow control section has been a major obstruction to everything that's been occurring so far, uh, mostly because they cannot guarantee the volume that's required to make, not necessarily profitable, but a, a responsible decision to have a landfill, um, because they don't know if they're gonna be getting enough money through that volume, which would be, you know, secured through flow control. So, um, excluding that from the agreement would provide, I think, a little bit more flexibility from the technical committee. But there is a major concern of if you're just trying to get as much volume as possible, then what does that mean for Wellington? So I think those issues still exist. I don't know, but I would definitely provide that feedback. We can provide that feedback during the meeting. Um, how is, how we can, what kind of assurances that we have, or is that represented somehow? But I know that that's been a major obstruction for guaranteeing or funding, or more so the private partnership for the, the landfill previously. So I'm not.
So are, do you feel like it's appropriate in the amendment, or do you feel like that would be an appropriate red line?
Um, I think removing the limit on flow control is necessary. And I do believe, Mr. Byrd, that they determined previously that was included because it was considered a legal concern that we could not enforce flow control at this level. But then they determined that might be an option. Please help.
Uh, good evening, Cody Byrd, Planning Director. Um, thank you for the, the inquiry. Um, there's certainly been a lot of discussion at the technical level and the policy level around the topic of flow control, which is, uh, directing materials to one site versus another and requiring that. It has been identified as a tool to help, um, balance the cost expectations and viability of different, uh, not only the landfill, but also other diversion program facilities. The legalities have been debated back and forth amongst different entities. And sometimes, uh, legal opinions are given by one individual. And sometimes you get a different opinion from a different individual, and there's not always agreement. Um, so that topic is still somewhat debatable. Um, but I, I do think that to Trustee McDonald's question, is it appropriate to leave it in there? I think, or to take it out, either way. I think other communities that are part into that IGA would object heavily if that's removed. Um, and I, from a technical standpoint, um, while I think that there are some concerns that, that I have raised regarding guaranteeing volumes where they go and those potential impacts to possibly Wellington, but possibly other communities might have similar concerns, either in volume of materials being directed to their communities or the distance that they have to haul, uh, materials from their community to a different dedicated site. Um, there's certainly a lot of nuance to all those equations. I think what's holding up some of those conversations on that topic right now is that it's not an option. Um, and making it available to be an option would invite additional conversations amongst the communities to, to evaluate what are the best alternatives.
I think, and, and, and your comment is so valid, but I think a larger concern is the overall volume, not just necessarily the flow of it. So we discussed previously, if, if the volume required in order to make this viable requires that we start getting trash from Cheyenne, start getting trash from outside Laramore County, is that acceptable? Um, in order to make it viable? And in my mind, it's not. I mean, this is our resource that we're, we're spending our money on in order to serve our community. So I think other questions will occur like that. Um, but of course, within this, they do note that diversion, um, recycling and all those are still top of mind and, and, um, goals of the county. So those concerns might be acknowledged by those goals, but not, there's no assurance, right? So, um, I think the flexibility to start considering it, to even determine if it is legal. I think we need to, for one, to have it out of there, but I don't, I don't know what the right answer is for that.
Just wanna clarify, you guys were talking about amendment. You two have seen, the rest of us have not received this. Is that correct?
Uh, it's an attachment.
To what?
I don't, I don't.
Yeah, it ends on the memo. That's the last page in that. I, I just wanted to make sure that I'm not, I didn't miss a document. That's fine.
Well, I'm, there is on the technical advisory committee.
Yeah, I know.
From a satellite perspective.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
We got it internally for this, for our.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't something like, I haven't seen what you're talking about.
So before, I think we have any formal response, unless anybody has anything to share right now. We'll, we'll get that to everyone and you'll be able to review it and provide any feedback, of course, to us, um, to Mr. Byrd, Patty, probably Patty's probably the best person to distribute appropriately. So, um, cause there are a couple pieces in there that's recommending exclusion immediately. These are all at the recommendation of the technical committee, are they not?
The, the technical committee had, um, been evaluating some of the guidance from the policy council. And in terms of preparing recommendations back to the policy council, there was not agreement amongst the technical
That makes sense.
committee. And so the recommendation from the technical committee was maybe there needs to be a pause, put on the broader, more, uh, complicated discussions about what is the right alternative mix and how do we reach those conclusions? And instead put a pause on that and take care of some of the simple tasks that have been holding up the other conversations, preventing them from happening. So it was kind of, uh, uh, in a sports reference term, it's a, it was like a punt. Um, to, to allow something to happen to spur the, the more complicated conversations down the road.
Okay. But that makes sense.
So that was the recommendation from the TAC was maybe there's an alternative to put it on pause while we consider, um, do a couple of simple things, reevaluate all the more complicated things as a group and bring that back. Um, I will throw out there, too, um, just the, the general context of that IGA amendment truly is kind of a pause feature. Um, and while it would require board action to, uh, on a future meeting, not tonight, to actually take action on that, because it's an intergovernmental agreement with five parties to that, each one of those five parties would have to approve the same language, not close to or similar to, but the same. And so that was a question that I raised at the technical committee Monday, yesterday. Um, that is every community on the same page in terms of this precise language? And that question was debated a little bit.
Also.
That there was, there was probably maybe generally intended to be in the same direction in, in terms of the intent.
Yeah.
Um, but the, you know, redlining, wordsmithing type of activity was not yet a hundred percent in agreement that it was ready to move it forward. So there's still some coordination that I think will likely be discussed at the policy council meeting on the nineteenth.
Okay, perfect. And then just, do you have a comment? Otherwise I would.
I have some feedback on this from watching the Zoom meetings. Um, that was one of my concerns was the flow projections and where the amount of trash would be coming from. And when that question was asked, there was no limit on where they could bring it from. They could truck it over states thousands of miles. So we would, could very well be getting Las Vegas trash here in Wellington. So, and I do think that if it is our money and it is our funds that are being expended, and it's not just Wellington, it's the five communities as well. It, um, also appeared to me in watching that, that many of the people that were participating in that conversation mirror what Cody was saying, that they were not at that time in support of taking everybody's trash. They wanted to make sure that our community was handled for an extended period of time. So that's kind of what I took. I would like to see the flow projection stay in there. The, the protections, I would make, wanna make sure that we're taking care of Laramore County.
So the current IGA, um,
Can just do a quick point of order. We're at ten o'clock. I move that we extend our meeting to ten fifteen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
So, and it's, oh man, the computer just said, um, the, the amendment, um, is proposing that they remove prohibiting flow control. So it's like a double negative. So right now it's prohibited, that we can't control flow whatsoever. So they would be removing that piece. Um, the other pieces, um, other than just the, the hold, um, there's a couple other redline pieces, but my.
No, you're fine.
That was amazing timing.
I think that definitely, I don't have any questions about the staff report. I think, you know, we have more information come down the line that may warrant a work session discussion specifically.
Yeah, and in the future, when we have a work discussion, I mean, we could talk about our priorities here and we've all been in pretty good agreement of the, the, the bullet points that we're pushing to represent Wellington. But we really wanna dive into that deeper and see if we have specific environmental diversion, recycling goals, if that is our top priorities or not. I mean, I, my opinions on kind of the feedback we've received already in the community meetings, and that's why we've been driving certain pieces. But it would be a great conversation. I know we have more talk, trash talk coming.
Perfect. Perfect.
Mayor, may I make, make one, one comment?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um, trustee Teets, um, I just wanted to clarify, one of the, the comments you had made earlier, and, and I, I don't think that anything was wrong, but I wanted to just make sure I kinda covered the bases. One of the comments you made was relative to, um, the cost, and you said not just for the town of Wellington, but county and others as well. And under the current IGA, um, amongst the five parties, Wellington is not obligated for any of the costs of the facility improvements. I, I, again, I don't think you were wrong, but I wanted to make that really clear, that the current IGA doesn't obligate the town to any cost expenditures. And neither does the proposed amendment, but that is something that we're certainly acutely aware of, the cost to residents for services, um, as is the county and all the other, uh, party jurisdictions to that as well. So I just wanted to make that clear, because I know not everyone was on the board at the time that original IGA was constructed, but there's no current obligation for the town of Wellington per case.
It specifically mentions that the county is responsible for any additional and over costs. So in that, in that, in that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay. Board reports. Trustee Gator?
I've got things, but I think I need to save it, because anyway, we've got two executive sessions and we're, I have a hard stop at ten thirty. So I will, will hold on anything and we'll get it next time.
Perfect. Trustee?
I do. Sorry, I didn't realize, um, so we all received an email from Jamie Grimm, who is the representative to elected officials for C dot. Um, and she did in that email ask if we were interested in participating in a C dot one oh one. So I'm get, gauging feelings, because I would love to participate, but I didn't wanna move forward with something that somebody else also might be interested in learning about. So I don't know if that's something that Patty sets up or.
If you would like me to, I certainly can do that.
Support it. Yep.
Okay.
Awesome.
Bring it in like a work session.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Um, the other thing is, is I want to say thank you to trustee Gator. So in the three years that I have been attending these meetings, he has persistently insisted on doing line item reviews of our budget, something that was not done in previous years. I am extremely grateful because I feel that this not just helps us understand what we're looking at as in numbers, but someone from our community could sit and watch these videos and remotely understand what is actually going on in the community with our finances. Four or five years ago, I'm not sure you would have been able to tell, and maybe possibly right now, we're not all able to tell. But it is so much more clear when people are speaking to me, well, why are we paying so much for this specific thing? That makes it so much easier than why are you blowing all of our money? So I do wanna give him a huge kudos because he was truly one of the only ones that was insistent for many cycles that wanted to review the budget line item for light item. I will say I appreciate doing it in our trustee meetings, instead of spending an entire Saturday doing so, because it allows time for us to ask questions and get good feedback when you break it down section by section. When I attended those budget meetings for that one day, it was a lot to absorb in a little bit of time. So I love the fact of how this is broken up. But I also appreciate the fact that our town staff has taken the time and answered so many additional questions. And I know it's probably not the funnest thing to have to do this with every new board of trustees when they start asking a lot of questions. Um, but I think a few of you have been here for a very long time or so, are probably used to receiving multiple questions from multiple boards. So I'm grateful for the time that you guys do spend. I know it probably feels repetitive. Um, so I just wanted to leave it at that this evening.
Thank you.
Helps I'll make a motion right now for the executive session. Uh, yeah, Mr. Clerk, will you please read the titles?
Item H one, executive session one, for the purpose of determining positions relative matter, relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiate, negotiations and/or instructing negotiators pursuant to section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four E CRS regarding negotiations related matters, including in the proposed Sage Farms annexation agreement as required by CRS twenty-four six four oh two two D dot five two A and two E. The executive session proceedings will be electronically recorded and the record will be preserved for ninety days through January eighth, twenty twenty-four. Item H two, executive session two, conferences with an attorney, uh, for the town pursuant to twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B for the purpose of receiving legal advice relative to pending litigation related to the appeal of a site plan approval. The executive session will not be recorded and an attorney certification will be provided as required by CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two two D dot five two B. The discussions in the executive session constitute privileged attorney-client communications.
I move that we go into executive session for the two, um, mentioned.
We need to move it into one at a time.
One at a time, okay. I move that we move into executive session number one.
I'll second.
That work for you? All right.
May I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Mayor Pretz and McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. I now open the first executive session, time being ten oh eight PM. Members of the public present in the boardroom are pleased to ask to exit the building during the duration of these sessions. Those present on live Zoom, please note that the virtual meeting will be ended for the duration of these sessions.